Fortune in his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Will you join us for the pledge?
Pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Move the agenda.
Moved by George, supported by Steve, to accept the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Brief public comment. No? Consideration of the consent calendar, minutes, communications.
Move the consent calendar.
Support.
Moved by George, supported by Tim, approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Administrators report.
Alright, well I got a quick report today. The last two weeks, we've primarily been focused on the budget and union negotiations, both of which will be discussed extensively throughout this meeting, so. As far as personnel, in the past two weeks, we have hired a nutrition coordinator at COA. They will be starting in twenty-six, OCC case manager, starting the third. We just closed a position, IT specialist. Yesterday, we received ten applications for that. We are currently accepting resumes for the chief assistant prosecuting attorney, and so Friday, district court clerk through... Today, we received thirteen apps while us preparing this. Central dispatch administrator assistant through Friday, we received fourteen apps for that, and head cook position at COA is open through Friday. We've received one app. And that's so far.
That's what.
That is my quick administrator report.
George?
Hey, um, on the twelfth, I had a meeting at the, um, uh, Hamilton Township, North Star Township. Uh, Hamilton Township, they're coming along with their new township hall. It was, uh, the poles were all in, it was framed up, the roof was on, as far as the plywood goes, and this week, they were supposed to put the metal roof on that, and then start getting ready for cement floor. They're gonna have a cement floor for here. Maybe they didn't so far this week, I don't know, but... But they're heading in a good direction, and everything's going well there. And then, uh, went to North Star. Uh, North Star is, uh, doing business as usual. They've continued to talk about their cemetery. They just hired a new company to mow their cemetery, and they were happy and pleased the way they were doing it. Apparently, it's the same company that does it, because, and I'm not sure who does it, but I can't remember the name. But, uh, that was, that was all good there, just a general meeting there. And then, uh, on Tuesday, I attended the, uh, union negotiations on Tuesday, and then, uh, on Tuesday evening, we had Lafayette Township and Wheeler Township. Lafayette Township approved their blight ordinance, and then we'll be posting it in the paper. And then Wheeler Township is, their supervisor is retiring, and they're getting ready to switch over after the election, and Neil Jenkins won the primary, and I don't think he's got any competition on the other side, so Neil will probably be the... And, and also, um, they had, uh, Brian Godley, who was a trustee, will not be running again, so they'll be getting two new trustees and a supervisor, so there's gonna be quite a turnover there, but they do have the solid staff and the people that are being put in place have been around, so it's not like it's, you know...
Where is this?
Wheeler Township. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, and then after that, uh, had new negotiations on, uh, what was it? What day was that? We had negotiated, Friday?
Friday.
Yeah.
In Tuesday.
Friday the sixteenth, uh, and we finished up that, and we'll be going into closed session later on to talk about those negotiations. And that's my report.
Well, they knocked the old building down in Hamilton?
Yes. Yes, they did. Yeah, when they get in the other one, they'll demolish that one. Yeah.
On, um, August eighth, I went to the mental health meeting at Wright Avenue, and they discussed, um, oh, some workers are paid by the hour, some salary, they discussed that. Michelle Stillwet, again, um, one big project is someday, the old Wright Avenue school building's gonna come down. Oh. And, and they're gonna have a new building, and so that... Wright Avenue School's been around, that building's been around as long as I have, I think.
That's a long time, Tim.
Yeah, but I don't, they're joyful to have it knocked down sometime, I don't know. Directors reported that how happy they were with their jobs and helping people and have positive results, and, uh, that job, you know, their job is, I find that it's hard to help people, people that need the most help, it's hard to help, but seems like they do a good job with that. And then yesterday, uh, Steve was very generous again to drive me way up to Roscommon, and the Northern Michigan Counties Association, Dina Bosworth talked, and see if I have it right, the state of Michigan. Both houses have a narrow Democratic majority, and the Senate, no one's running. But the House people are running, and, um, she said if the Democrats lose the House, they might, uh, try to pass things, you know, as lame ducks, while they still have the governorship in both houses. So she said that. They talked a lot about septic tanks. And, uh, I think a lot of people in Northern Michigan probably have septic tanks, because they don't, uh, they don't have a lot of big cities. And they talked about, you know, inspections and stuff like that, uh. So there's, in the Northern Michigan Counties, there's thirty-two counties in Northern Michigan that are in the association. Amy Delinkie talked about, um, the opioid settlement, one point six billion dollars. And that's allocated to counties. And, um, it doesn't really say how much they're gonna give the counties and what time schedule or anything. Eighty-five percent of the money should be used for remediation of opioid, but as, uh, Steve's question pointed out, that, uh, there's no real law that, you know, for guidance of how to spend it or, or anything like that. And, uh, that's about it. There's no regular scheduled meeting, uh, for next month. So that's, that's it.
Steve?
Um, on the thirteenth, I attended the Ashley Planning Commission meeting. I was only there for a short period of time, because I had to... That, that meeting happens right before the Elba Township, and they actually cross over, so I left there. Um, I was able to get them the information they had been requesting from me. Um, they're trying to get a sidewalk installed from... Basically, if you know where the Ashley Care Center is, um, kind of in the southwest corner of the Village of Ashley, down to on the, um, east side of the street, the city owns the majority of that property now, where it's been annexed into the city. They want to put a sidewalk in down to the Dollar General, because there's a ton of people that walk down that street now, um, and it's kind of an accident waiting to happen. Right now, when it's daylight till Dollar General's open, or until they close, you're probably gonna be okay, but soon, you know, the, it's gonna get dark, there's very low lighting out there, um. So anyhow, I was able to get figured out, they need to, the Village of Ashley needs to contact the township, because there's two parcels of property that are still considered rural township property that are on the east side, so they've gotta coordinate with the township to do a resolution, to allow them to put a sidewalk in. And then they'll have to get two different permits, one for the village's property from the road commission to work within the road right away, and one from... Or one for the township to do that, but they're moving in the right direction, they're looking for funding sources right now. Um, with that being, uh, a new piece of property out there that, um, that they are, you know, looking at getting things done out there. Beacon and Bridge is, I'm still on schedule to have that be a spring of twenty twenty-five project. Deploy a gas station slash truck stop just east of the Dollar General. Right now, his plan is to leave one lot in between, in hopes that a fast food restaurant will come in there. They haven't got anyone committed for sure to that, but they're leaning heavily on one, um, to try and get that, but they want the gas station there before they would even consider it, so. That was, uh, Ashley. Then went over to Elba, actually, uh, we had some dignitaries from the county there, Chris was there, um, Deandra was there, and, uh, am I drawing a blank? Um, Bill Leonard was there, uh, to talk about the blight. Uh, there's a one open, but well, it's now closed, uh, blight case in Elba Township. If you've driven into Bannister from the west going east, it was the first house on the south side, which actually sits in the township. It's, it's kind of a mess right now, because, uh, the guy ended up putting up a fence, there's some people that disagreed on how wonderful the fence is, but there's no regulations on what fence has to look like. Um, they've closed it out, but there's some discussion, as he has all kinds of stuff parked on the outside of the fence, and is that his property, or is that someone else's property, and they're gonna try and get that figured out. The only way to do it is to have it surveyed, so. Sure, the township paying to have the survey done, you know, he's not gonna, you know, probably get that survey done, because if he, it's not in the right place, it's, you know what I mean, so. Um, so that's kind of, that's why everybody was there. Um, because when this first came down, there was some real concern about this individual that had had lots of law enforcement presence at his residence. Um, Laura had been working on this very case. Anyhow, long story short, it's way better than it was. It's a long ways from perfect, but, um, they have a lot of places that look a lot worse than that one anymore, so, um, they voted to close it out. Due to what George was just talking about, we're signing new, um, uh, blight,
Blight.
New blight ordinance, which has been changed. If you don't close this one out, you can't follow through, so if there's a, another violation, you open a new case under the new rules, which really opened the door to a lot more things that we can do, so that, that was the right thing to do, and actually, like Chris said, it was very smooth sailing, I thought. It went very, very well, so, which was good. That's how we want them to be. Uh, the objective was met, and everybody there was happy to some degree, which I guess is, what are you gonna do? Thursday night, I went to Washington Township's meeting. Um, Washington is moving forward with their, um, uh, project to expand their, um, township hall. Their township hall has had to go through some, um, downsizing from what they had originally dreamed of, just because the prices were coming in way out of whack, from what they would be able to afford. Um, even with the money from the county, ARPA funds and their own ARPA funds, um, they have downsized it to a more affordable size. It's still gonna be a wonderful addition, and it's gonna give them some office space. Uh, it's gonna free up some room where they can actually have a basement to put the heating in, and right now, if you're in a meeting there when it's cold, there, the furnace room really juts out from the, um, wall at the kitchen, and it's loud if it, if it starts to run or anything, so. It'll be nice when they get that done. Um, they have applied for four additional grants. Two of them have came through, one was from the, uh, Grasset Community Foundation, and, uh, um, I believe one was from the state of Michigan. It's gonna allow them to do some updating in the old portion, so I, they're pretty excited to, to be making some headway with theirs, um. Lots of, uh, comments about, um, the road commission, um, kind of once it got on a roll, um, I started fielding lots of questions about the road commission, and tried to get everybody to understand that I'm not a road commissioner. Um, but there's some serious, like, um...
To the club.
Yeah, so anyhow, long story short, I, I just contacted the, contacted Mark from Road Commission, and today I was happy to send the two of the residents that the things they requested were done. And I, um, got from Mark exactly how he wants these people to contact the, the road commission, either by phone or email. I have that saved in my phone, and from now on, I'm just forwarding that stuff to them, because um, the, the road commission has its own road commissioners, they can deal with road commission issues, not me. Um, so anyhow, um, then yesterday, uh, Tim and I went up with Jerry from, uh, uh, Isabella County, and, uh, it's always a good conversation, I think, on both ways. Up and, and back, we, uh, we get to talk and find out what's going on in Isabella County, and he asks us all kinds of questions about our, um, situation here in Grasset County. Um, so we have wonderful conversation up there and back. Um, it's an enjoyable drive, it's beautiful up there, um. Where did I set those papers that we, oh, Northern Michigan Counties. Uh, to add a couple of things, um, to what Tim said, um, Terry, are you familiar with the Raphael decision? Okay, and do we have money set aside in case we have decisions that we have to pay? Or is that something that comes out of our, like, delinquent tax fund? Okay.
I was gonna talk about that.
Okay, because that was, that was one of the things that the MAC, um, talked about was, um, you know, they have, what is it, till three thirty-one to twenty-five to file for these, and it goes back to twenty fourteen.
Yes.
So I mean, you're talking ten years, that people can go back on properties that may have been sold because of back taxes, and if the property sold for more than they paid for it, these people may be able to sue, not everybody will be able to. They may be able to, to file a claim to try and get what anybody profited from that.
I'm gonna go through this right now, since you brought it up.
Well, it's, it's up to you guys. Do you want her to talk about it now, or just wait till she gets, because we still got commissioners to go.
We have. We actually have an agenda, and then we'll discuss it.
Yeah, we'll talk about that, so that was another thing that was discussed, um. They, they talked extensively about the, the opioid settlement, and that was, Tim brought it up, you know, but my concern with that, when you're talking about, was it one point six billion dollars? That is getting divided up amongst counties, and there's still money coming in from Kroger that we don't even know how much is coming. And there's two of the huge pharmaceutical companies. Purdue Pharma has filed for bankruptcy protection, they haven't contributed any money yet to this thing, whether they will or not, who knows? But you're talking about very, very, very large sums of money, and so my question was, being that I've worked in the government for thirty years, what are the stopgaps that have been put in place to make sure that they don't get defrauded? And she, point blank said, there are none. I mean, that was her answer, there are none. If they find out there are any, they can forward those to the attorney general, for the attorney general to look into, um, but, I mean, that, that can be quite a long process as well, so I think, uh, you know, I, I just think any county, you know, we are getting this large sum of money to be dissipated out. I think we want to make sure that, um, where it's going, uh, we keep, take tabs on how it's being utilized, so that we don't end up being scammed out of any of this money, because, uh, yes, I mean, there's potential there for a lot of money to get messed with, as far as I'm concerned. When you start talking about that large sum of money, and maybe we don't have any business keeping track of it, but, um, I just, I couldn't believe that they have nothing to protect that, being that every time you turn the TV on, somebody's trying to scam the government out of those problems. Um, and then last night, I went over to North Shade Township. North Shade has finished their township hall. Several, a few of us were at their township opening, was really nice. Uh, this was the first meeting I've attended since they've been there. I don't know if it was because they had a meeting after a meeting, but typical, um, John, um, he, he doesn't have very long meetings, so we were done in about twenty-three minutes with the business meeting. Um, but then they had another meeting afterward, I don't know if you are familiar, but there's a huge power line that's being installed in Grasset County. It's gonna leave North Shade, there's one property owner from where the substation that they put in for the, um, windmills, Nelson Road, um, there's one property owner in, in North Shade Town, or excuse me, New Haven Township that's affected by this, and then it goes all the way across North Shade Township. It's going to happen, basically, they had an attorney come in from the Detroit area, who works on these kind of things, um, and, and broke the bad news to, uh, I mean, there was, I've been to a lot of meetings, there's never been this many people even close. The, the room was full of landowners that are all gonna be affected by this. But basically, um, they're gonna be coming across that township, and in the process, this line will go from Grasset County to Oneida Township, which is Grand Lodge area in Eaton County, and then it will be coming up from the state line approximately Shipshawana, Indiana, to, um, Grand Lodge, Michigan, and, um, there's some lawsuits involved in some farmland near, uh, Powamo that they're fighting with, I think it's ten landowners that are fighting where they want to go there. But, um, you know, a lot of these, uh, guys are really concerned, because some of them are, this thing is going within three hundred feet of their homes. Um, some of them, it's going at an angle across their property, which will pretty much, I mean, they'll still be able to farm, but they're gonna have to farm around, and nobody seems to know for sure what the poles are gonna be, if they're gonna be the big, um, just north of Grant Road, where the big quad leg, uh, poles go across there, the superstructures go across there, but that's the same size of lines that will be going down, um. But there's also the possibility that it could be something that takes, um, a lot of guy wires out, which is gonna be, um, really, you know, it takes this land out of, they can't use irrigation anymore, they can't install irrigation, or at least, uh, center pivot irrigations, they can't install them, simply because of how tall and the amount of power it'll art to these things, so it really does affect the, the land value of a lot of these, um, of these farmers' farmland. They are, um, this attorney basically encouraged all of them to, don't verbally speak with any of the people that are gonna come and try and negotiate a deal with you, ask to get your paperwork and, and then be able to fill it out in writing, so that they can't take words out of your mouth or twist what you said. Um, so, I mean, he had really good advice for him, but the room was full of people, and there was a lot of people and a lot of questions and things, so it was a really good discussion that they had.
I have a question for you. What about, these are supposed to be high electrical wires, is that gonna affect people's health that lives near it?
Yeah, I, I have no idea how that'll, how that will, you know, I, I know they've had issues with the ones north of Grant Road, with with dairy farms having issues with cows and, and things like that, so I, I have no idea on any of that stuff, but those were questions that people were asking last night, especially when they were close to their homes. Um, because it's, it's gonna degrade home values and things like that, so that's what their main concerns were, but anyhow, that's the...
Which is it for the winter bins, or is it for the?
So this is a main transmission line. If, remember back, I can't remember what year they said, when there was a blackout in New York City, um, the, the country now is trying to make sure that all of our big power lines are hooked in loops, so that if there's ever a problem or a blackout, they can feed power in multiple different places, in multiple different ways, and this is one of the... There's already one over on the east side of the state, there's a one over towards this side of the state, so that's what the line is for, is to. And then there was two different farm, well, they talked about two different farms, one farmer in there has been approached about, um, and I don't know if you knew this, about a a battery plant being, or a battery storage facility being placed down, and, uh, one was in, one had been talked to in New Haven, and one had been talked to in North Shade, about a, a battery storage facility. One was on a twenty-two acre parcel of land in New Haven, and then, uh, one was, uh, farmer had been, he owns a lot of underground down there, they didn't specifically say where, but...
New Haven, and what was the other one?
New Haven and North Shade Township, so anyhow, um, so it was an interesting discussion, I was there till after nine o'clock last night. Um, just listening to all the things that were going on with this, so it was, it was very interesting, a lot of questions were asked, so. That's my report.
Wow, you had a lot to say.
Yeah, sorry. I could tell Gerd was shaking his head over there. He loves it when I get out of the world, Gerd.
Amy?
Okay, I have a lot to say too. Um, and I went to MMR meeting, which was the first of the, first of the month. And, uh, they're gonna be contacting us, we renew our contract. And also, I can't remember, it was fifteen or seventeen counties that they're in now, there's only two counties that don't have to pay for ambulance service, and we're one of them. Uh, now, if you wanted MMR as an ambulance service, you would have to pay to have them come into your county, and it's a couple million dollars a year, just so you know. So we want to keep our contract as is, and just renew it, and they're gonna get ahold of us sometime. I was thinking he would maybe even be at this meeting, um, but I know they're pretty busy too. Uh, so that is one of the things that I, one of the meetings I went to. Another one was child advocacy, they've been asking me to come for several times, for several years now, and it's been hard to make it there, so I, I did, I decided to go, because I had a free moment, and, uh, very interesting, um. Couple of things, I got a couple of, several pages for you guys and your, um, and your paperwork here today. And they're looking for volunteers, or they're doing several things in the month of September, October, and I think a few things in November, uh, where they're looking for volunteers, things at the park. It'll be fun stuff, they don't last very long. I volunteered for one of them on the tenth, from five to seven. And we'll go and, whatever, I said, whatever you need me to do, I'll be glad to do it. So it's a nice way to get involved in the community, and also to help. They have a lot of issues also, um, with, obviously with children, and, um, the big issue, another place, let me go to this, another place I was asked to come to was, and I used to go there, it's a four-time-a-year meeting, and I was sent a notice that they were gonna have it at the correction facility, and I thought that'd be nice, I think I'll go, go to it. I used to, when we went to that COVID nineteen, they were doing it online, and so now they're back to having it there at the prison. And they have the same issues with drugs, um, a shortage of, uh, employees, and, um, the other one with child advocacy, it's more drugs and suicidal, suicide. And so those are two of the issues that we're looking at in, in our county. Um, another, um, meeting I went to also was Elma City. Um, I decided to go on Tuesday night, the, the second Tuesday of the month, and that was real interesting too, and they're also doing many things in the park, trying to get people involved, get them on more, so everybody, you know, have people meet each other, and be able to be more alert of things that are going on. And I know that there's an issue with the schools, I'm a pair pro, you are too, Tim, and they are short bus drivers, teachers, pair pros, and, uh, pair pros that are full-time, and I'm a part-time pair pro. So there are issues with basically with kids and drugs and shortage of help. So that is my report. Okay, I did see our sheriff at, um, at the child advocacy. Sheriff, do you wanna add to?
I've been with Spuce Coalition for ten years.
Yeah, they've asked me to come, but it's, this is...
It's on the meeting.
Yeah. It was fun, there was, I was surprised, there was a lot of people there. Um, our Commission on Aging was there, and, I mean, several people I knew, I don't know which, I don't remember what department that they're, um, with, and so, but it was just fun to go to it and, uh, find out what they, more than what they do, and, um, you know, if anything I can do to help, I'm more than happy to help.
Thank you. Well, I have a very short one. Uh, most of my meetings were either canceled or I missed them, because I was goofing off in Germany.
Again.
This Villa Township Hall is, uh, all enclosed, you're hoping to have it open, uh, for voting in November.
Awesome.
Without township, is that?
We have an announcement. Saturday, from ten AM till two, we'll have an airport fly-in, drive-in. We can promote our proposed new terminal. And we've invited all our local and national politicians. We'll see how many shows up, Jerry Nair will be there, I don't, and the other ones will probably send representatives.
Yeah, I know for sure Molinar is out of town, won't be here, but I believe they're gonna try and send a representative, I bet you guys were sending that applicant or, uh, invitation to them, so. But he actually, the day before that thing has another function that he has to leave for, so.
So it is open to the public, and there will be food served, so.
Dave, I was planning on going, but I do have me, you know, town, now if that should cancel my hometown, I'll be there.
Hey, that takes care of their commissioner committee reports. Guess there'll be a Park and Rec promotional video by some guy named John Rayburn.
Hello, everyone, uh, reintroduce myself, John Rayburn, Director of Parks and Rec for Grash County, um, just wanna give you guys a quick update, you know, a couple months, few months into the job, uh, things been going pretty smooth. Very busy, um, reservations every weekend, um, had family reunions, birthday parties, you name it, it's happening, um, which is a good sign. But, uh, I, I think it's gone pretty smooth, uh, with the support of my staff at the parks and with the staff up here helping me learn along the way, been very helpful. So I do appreciate that, um, and then when I got hired in, they asked me, you know, what's a, a good way to get people more, uh, more people involved at the parks, or to come to our parks, and I said, well, social media, word of mouth, um, advertising was the big thing. So we came up with a, a video, promotional video. Um, so we partnered with Elma College, um, talked to a student over there and told him what our ideas were, and he came out to our parks and took some footage and put together a promotional video. Um, and you guys are the first to see it tonight, so, here's a short little video for you.
I get to watch it tomorrow too, right?
Oh, it's not turned on.
That's just a nice little promotional video that we thought would be very useful by posting it on social media and, uh, every so often, just to let people know what we have to offer. And yeah, other than that, that's all I got.
John, I was gonna ask a question, uh, I see the campsites there now, how often and how many people do you have? I assume it's tent camping.
So you could fit a camper in a tent, or two tents, the lot's about thirty-two foot, you could fit a thirty-two foot, um, camper on there. You can book up, you know, you can book up to four nights, five days per time, but they're booked every weekend from May first to, um, middle of August, end of August.
Oh, is there electricity at those sites?
There's electricity at every, all, all four sites at both parks.
Yep.
So.
This is a wonderful idea that you've done.
Yeah.
Uh, water quality this year, I know that's been something we've been really trying to monitor there, cuz you've had issues in the past, but this year?
This year it's been good, they treated it, uh, Memorial Weekend, and that took care of a majority of the problems, and then they just recently, they didn't do the same treatment. They treated a little bit of algae here, uh, two weeks ago. Out at Hubshire, um, just to take care of the stuff on top. Other than that, Reed's good, and now with that, those two treatments at Hubshire, um, cleaned that water up really well. So, and I've talked-
So I just want people to know, cuz that's been a concern in years past at our parks was the water quality, especially Hubshire with the algae stuff, but we, you'd gotten with this company and, and, uh, they're really keeping a, a close eye on it and monitor it.
Fishermen have told me it's cleaned up pretty well.
That's awesome, so, it's fantastic.
Not pulling up weeds all the time and all that stuff. Everything's cleaning up.
Yep, great, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Request for annual approval of the county-funded contracts utilized by Grashet County Department of Health and Human Services.
My name is Lori Teal, and I am from the Department of Health and Human Services. This is my program manager, Melanie Davis. And, um, we are here to request approval for two contracts that we do yearly with the county. Um, the first one is called Parent Mentor. And I sent these over to Angie, did y'all have a chance to peek at them? Okay, so that one is, um, a contract with a company called La Casa. La Casa is out of Powell. However, the, um, parent mentors that they hire are usually from our county or someplace close. Because, um, this contract is for forty thousand dollars. And what this company does for us is twofold now, um, I've added some things to this contract because our needs are changing. Um, the first thing and the thing that they've done the longest for us is what we call Parent Mentor. And they supervise visitation between foster children and their parents. So what they do is, um, take an observation perspective so that they can ensure the child's safety and make sure that the parents are learning the tools that we're trying to provide for them. Um, the second thing is, um, that's going to start ten-one, if you approve my contract, is that we're going to put these folks in their home so that they can teach them parenting skills, budgeting skills, cleaning skills, um, time management skills. Uh, all of the things that seem to overwhelm the folks that need their help the most. So, um, that is the first contract, do you have questions on that one? Okay, our second contract is a contract that we've had for a few years with a company called Highfields. Highfields is all over the state of Michigan, um, they, Lansing is the office that we deal with, and that helps us with this contract, it's called Advanced Impact, it is an eighty-nine thousand dollar contract. And what Advanced Impact does is also go into the home of the folks that we serve. And they do assessments and try to assist our folks in the things that they need to do most to maintain the safety so that their children can either remain in their home or return home. So again, parenting skills, time management skills, cleaning skills, um, nutrition is a big one, anything else?
Yep, um, this contract is really used as well to ma- maintain children in their home before we end up having to see court intervention. So if there's a, uh, an example, I've heard a few things tonight, substance abuse, uh, substance misuse, domestic violence. That worker is able to teach them the research, and say, do planning to ensure that the children are safe and they can maintain in their home.
So, one question here, are we finding, I love these programs, I think they're great. Um, when I was reading them, and I'm very familiar with Highfields and worked with them for a long, long time at their facility in Anandega, and anyhow, um, are we finding that, you know, there was like, when I graduated from high school in the end of the eighties, there still had home act. They still had, um, programs where you learned some of these basic life skills while you were in high school. Now, I'm assuming that the age of people that you're dealing with are past that, you know, I mean, there are people who went through high school, graduated from high school after those programs all ended. And I guess my question is, is, um, have they done any studies on, you know, if we get this information to people at a younger age, was there less of a problem? When we did, you know what I mean, every kid that went through your, the school system had to have these things. It's a necessary, you know, thing we have to have now, but I just, some of these things that you're dealing with. And obviously, the world has changed, but, um, I'm wondering if you know, they, they, they got rid of a lot of those programs because they were costing too much taxpayer money. And it costs a fraction of what we spend now to do these same type of programs, and a lot of times, you're catching these people on the tail end after there's already been an issue. You know, that's how you get involved, and that's, I'm, I really struggle with our education system, you know, to me, teaching people the basics about if you have a child, this is some of the things you have to do, this is how you have to take care of a home, this is how you have to balance checkbook. This is how interest works, just cuz there's a new car on the TV screen, doesn't mean you're gonna be able to make that payment, you know, that's, I just think that, um, we've kind of, as a society, we've, we've missed this huge gap with people, and then we're always trying to play catch-up with, um, with these programs, I think they're great, and I do think they do a huge, they make a huge impact in people's lives, but I just, I wonder sometimes if we went back to some of the basics of stuff. Um, throw you well, if, if it would make a difference in these people's lives and, and keep some of them out of the system that you're dealing with.
I think you're right, um, I'm unaware of any studies like that, I wish someone would do some because I think we have a lot of issues, and that's a big one. You don't know how to cook, if you don't know how to clean, and you don't learn that skill at home. Now they have nowhere to learn that.
Yes.
So we, you're right, we're coming in after the fact with dumpsters, with garbage bags, with cleaning supplies. And trying to teach someone something that years ago, we were all taught by our parents, our grandparents, and at school. So you're right, you're right, I think that, that would-
I just, I just wondered if there was a, you know, anyone who's, you know, we hear about all these wonderful things we're trying to do in our schools, and we're, we're failing at the most basic things that every single person needs to know how to do. It doesn't matter how much money you make. You still, even if you're hiring somebody to do it, or they're doing a good job, you know what I mean, if you don't know what the heck you're doing, you don't know what the heck you're doing, and-
And I can't speak for the educational system, or where we have failed as a society, but, um, with these programs, we are coming into contact with families who, um, may be impacted by substance use, severe mental health. Things that maybe they did learn in school, that they haven't been able to maintain, and now they're giving children. We also have families who have generational neglect and never learned those basic skills, even if they were offered. Um, but what I can tell you is, over the past at least three years, with utilization of this contract, it has impacted our out-of-home placements. So we can see that there is a difference, so we are impacting families and really keeping more children in home. Um, and you look back at three to four years ago, you know, we had upwards of seventy-seven children in the foster care system in Grashet County. Today, we have thirty-five. And then we have our second contract, that Parent Mentor contract, which helps us to get kids home quickly. So reunification is our goal, we're usually succeeding between twelve to fifteen months of getting reunification successfully implemented. Working with our courts, our GALs, Child Advocacy, and multiple other systems. So these two contracts are really within our control that we can help implement to families.
Well, thank you for what you guys do, cuz, uh, I mean, without you guys, we'd be spiraling out of control, I mean, really, I mean, it's unfortunate, but it's true.
These two contracts and these programs, we've carried, we, we've had these for many, many years. And I've noticed, um, in, in my role, that it really seems to be being utilized a lot more this year. Is there, can you explain why the utilization rate for this is so much higher now than it has been in previous years?
I tell you, over the past two years, we've had some change in our eligibility criteria for county-funded programming. So we are able to not only use these with the cases to prevent removal, we have now opened the door to be able to also use them to help successfully reunify families. So we're able to put those services in with families to ensure that we're not seeing that re-removal or that recurrence. So children are able to stay in their care, and we also attribute that to some of our lower numbers with children currently in care. Um, so really, it's kind of a tried and true model. Um, we've also had some additional programming from the state that has changed a little bit, so we are looking heavily at our, heavy, at our county contracts. Which I don't know that we, have we utilized, well, not on the second contract for Advanced Impact. I don't know that we've ever fully utilized the eighty-nine thousand that we request. Um, but we request it based on our need, which has adjusted over the last few years.
Yeah, and that was my question, cuz I don't think you guys have come close to hitting half of that contract before, but you, if you can, you could go over it this year, you might have to at some point say, we can't charge the county anymore, so that was, that was just what my question was based on.
Our staff do a phenomenal job.
You don't use all the money, where's the money that you don't use?
It stays here.
They don't, they only pay it out as they need it. As it as needed, kinda.
Back in the general fund.
It's as needed.
It also-
This prevents um, Jew and house from being placed in homes, is that correct? That would, so this, this, the county fund prevents the, from getting into the state's control jurisdiction essentially.
You, you need a separate motion for each of these contracts?
Would be best, please.
Um, I saw move that we, um, enter into a contract with La Casa for a total amount of forty thousand.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan to-
Is it forty?
Forty for that one.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Sopsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes. Motion passed.
I saw move that we entered into a contract with Highfields Incorporated, do you need that CCF number up there, Chris, included in it?
No, um, Jennifer will bring it in.
Okay. Is it the same every year, like forty thousand and eighty-nine thousand?
In the last six years that I've done this, these programs, I've not increased those. I've tweaked, changed eligibility criteria when I needed to through the state. Um, I've added some programs and some things that the workers could do for them, but I've never asked for an increase.
So move that we, Grash County enters into a, a contract with Highfields Incorporated for a total of eighty-nine thousand for the year of twenty-twenty-five, or twenty-four, twenty-five.
Moved by Steve, supported by Tim, to enter into a contract with Highfields, up to a dollar amount of hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Yes.
Generous, let me, with our money.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Sopsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, girl. Thank you for what you guys do. Well, we have, uh-
Yeah, just, I apologize, just to add something onto that. You know, their utilization rate is up significantly, but I'm looking at the other side of it, is they're preventing institutional care. Of which we budgeted about three hundred thousand for, but only used forty thousand for.
That's good.
Oh, we need, we need, we need to get more people helped, and then they can't do it because they're not, they're only so big, that's the problem. You know? I mean, and what, what you mentioned, Jan, you, you go over to Casa and you see all those foster kids and everything here, a week ago, I was over there cooking hot dogs for them. And it just breaks your heart that these families come in there with these poor, these foster kids, they have nothing. Basically, and you know what, every one of those kids was so polite. Very just courteous and polite, they, and you want a hot dog, yes, please, and, and do, do you want, you know, you know, you want some chips, yes, please. They were all just, there wasn't one of them that was-
Sooner we can intervene when they're younger at that age and, and get these people so that they can function on their own and function and be a productive citizen, and, and keep them from, and to go down to the, the Highfields facility down in Anandega where they house these teenagers.
Oh, yeah. That's what we've lost them by that time.
Yeah, trust me, you've lost them.
Up next, Mayor's Actuary Report, Arnie Dagan. He's not been here before. How are you?
Oh, my, right?
You're the sheriff and I's favorite person two days ago.
Oh, wow, okay, that's-
That's. Well, all right. Thank you very much for allowing me to come again. Um, this is the twenty twenty three report. I know we talked about it earlier in the year. Um, it's out, usually comes out the end of June. You want to jump to page six, um, start there. Um, I don't know if you can see that, but we'll go to page six, which just starts, talks about the funding level. I know we just kind of went over this report um, earlier this year and then um, kind of talked about some of the numbers um. Wondering, do you want me to kind of just keep going over the high level or is there specific things you'd like me to kind of focus on since we've. We've had some of the conversation.
The high points.
Okay. So um, fun, funding level was ninety one percent in twenty twenty two to ninety percent in twenty twenty three. Again, not a big swing um, with twenty twenty two. You remember that we went over that, that there was that large loss. You're going to spread that out over the next five years. You're going to see that funding level go down before it goes up. Um, based on smoothing those losses, twenty twenty three was a good year as far as returns go. Um, the next page, page seven shows you, again, you, we, we met on, for the October bill that'll start um, this year. In October, on the far right, you'll see that, which is that almost forty eight thousand a month, which comes out to about five seventy five. Two ninety two on an annual basis, starting in October of twenty twenty four. This is the report showing you what it will be for October first of twenty twenty five. Showing it will go up to six ninety six, nine seventy two. Again, that's, that increases to pay off that unfunded liability that we've been talking about for the last seven years. Um, and um, to mitigate, again, some of the losses in the market slowly over time. Page. Um, let's see, let's go down to. Page nine. Um. We always talk about asset smoothing. Um, so in twenty twenty two, we talked about the, our. This year, we talked about the twenty twenty two report that showed the loss of um, a little over ten percent. You can see here on the bottom of page nine, where it comments on asset smoothing, you can see that it's. Um, showing the smooth rate of return is five point five four, while the actual market return is ten nine four. So we had a positive ten nine. Again, we talk about a big V-shaped volatility in the marketplace, um, that. Gain, loss, all those things get smoothed out over time. We talked about at the last meeting, the dedicated gains, that there was a higher return, that we would be using that to lower that assumption. That assumption went to six nine three. Something we didn't talk about at the time is the state treasurer's office moved their assumption for PA two oh two and others from six eight five. They raised it to six nine. So MERS lows to six nine three, the state raised it to six nine. So we're now within a point oh three percent difference. So as you're running your PA two oh two numbers, things like that, that's going to come pretty darn close. We have shown, seen across the, the country, Calpers and other plans that have dedicated gains similar to MERS. Kind of suspend some of those things because they're in the six eight five, six, and they don't want to go any lower. So we're seeing, seeing some of the groups start to. Gather around that upper sixes percentage, which I think is um, positive. Um, as we're looking to twenty twenty three is the final, um, the fifth report. So this is the five years that we'll look back for an experience study, but um, I think that that kind of helps. Um, to see people kind of fun, getting close to where we are currently. Any questions on dedicated gains, the assumption changing? Can't answer questions about treasury's number, but it is, it did change. Okay, um. Going to page twelve. Um, that kind of shows, again, that's that chart that shows those numbers. Um, for the next five years, again, you're going to see that funding level go down before it goes back up. That's smoothing out that loss. Again, if you don't want to see that, you can always put additional in. Doesn't have to be the case. I know you've bonded and done some other things and so you've got a bond repayment as well. So um, but that's, you're going to see that cost increase to account for that. Um, and then if you want to see it go down a little further to the next page. You can see the top graph kind of shows that V shape that we talked about, where you're going to see that loss go down to come back up. That's because of the loss of twenty twenty two. Um, and then you'll see from uh, the bottom of the page. Again, you're going to see your contributions go up, do this kind of fun little thing from based on when you close plans, what things were happening in the life expectancy before it starts to really slant downwards. As this is now a closed defined benefit one. Yes.
Well, I've looked at all this stuff. Is there any way to ever be? With a smoothing effect in the market and stuff, you, you, it's virtually impossible to be a hundred percent.
One hundred percent of the time?
Yeah.
For sure.
It's impossible.
Yeah, that's, that's why there's.
The more I read into this stuff, I was just like.
And that's, I mean, that's the point. I mean, we could certainly just do what market value does, but that puts a lot of pressure on municipalities who their budgets tend to be.
Yeah.
Much more stable. So we try to mitigate some of that. So that does mean, again, you're never going to be on a hundred percent when people are like, our goal is a hundred percent. I'm like. Just understand, it's always going to move and change. That's part of that until there's no one, no, no one any longer drawing on the plan. Um, which will be a long time from now. So, yep, people can live longer, live shorter. Markets can do well, markets cannot do. So there, there is going to be that bounce, but that's why there's that. Piece that kind of smoothes that out over time.
The next couple of years will.
You're going to have a lot more.
Will, will be able to look at it and decide whether we're going to have to up our contribution. We don't want to get below eighty five percent if we go, but uh, we were way below that. We were about fifty percent when we started. Um, and I've always said that our obligation is to our employees. And if we can do it, we'll make sure that our employees that have retirement coming, they're going to get their retirement. And that's how we're going to do it. But we've got another year or so before we have to really look at. Yeah.
I just, the more I read into it, I'm like, it's virtually impossible. It's like a dog chasing.
You're going to burn your brain out trying to.
You're never, ever going to get to where you're perfectly funded in this thing. It's impossible.
Yeah. And I mean, I have some groups that, that they like to stay above that a hundred percent or that's their goal. So they'll put in something into a surplus or something so that they have some of that cushion, control that a little bit more. Um, you'll see a lot of this legacy debt. That's the debt from the past. That's that amortization schedule. So you're going to see that kind of fall off. That's that dramatic, that's not. That, that dramatic shift down, people look at it, it has nothing to do with life expectancy or when you're planning on people not drawing from the plan anymore.
Yeah.
Truly just the amortization of the unfunded liability. And so when you look, um, I'm going to jump to page. Um, twenty.
There is light at the end of the tunnel because gradually all of our retirees are on this plan will have retired.
Yeah.
Hmm. I mean, and you're already seeing that you don't have very many actives, but this is that cash flow. So, or this is that total liabilities. And so you can see that. What I'm talking about from legacy debt is that four million or three point nine nine. And that is being paid off over that period of time. So that's when that. That is easier to get to, that legacy debt is easier to get to a hundred percent funded. And then you're just dealing with the generational volatility within that generation. Because that's going to be against. Amortized over ten years, which is well within what people work and retire in. And so you won't be dealing with thirty years of legacy, right? You'll be dealing with ten years so that you can stay up on that. But to get there, right, to get to that intergenerational equity, that takes that time. So you'll see a lot less, you know, in fifteen years, which I don't know how many of us will be still talking about this in fifteen years, but. Um, I have younger kids, so I might be here for forever. Um, anyway, so um, that's that. Um, but that's kind of what the goal is, is paying off that almost four million dollars over that period of time. Um, the page before it on page nineteen is that cash flow. We usually touch that really quick. Um, that's what's going in, um, what's coming in from an investment perspective and then what's going out the door. So you can see from a mature plan, again, two point. Four percent or two point four million, almost two point four million is going out, that parentheses numbers into retirees, which is what the plan's for. As you mentioned, um, so when five sixty six going in with the employees paying about seventeen and then the income assets. So again, you're going to see that probably what's going in is a little less than what's going out the door. That's why we're, we're watching that funding go down a little bit was that loss um, from that investment return. So you're going to see that for a little bit longer. If you don't like that downturn, I have some groups that are like, I don't want to move it, lose any more ground. You do always have the ability to put additional into surplus. I get that that's challenging from a budget perspective, but that is something um, that you can look at. Those are super high level because I don't want to put you to sleep again, but any other questions for me?
The best thing I saw on this report was year over year, the actual market value of our plan rose.
Yep.
After paying our participants.
Do.
It's still, so that says that we had a really good year with a plan when you pull away all the, the smoothing and.
So they do four million out of it and you still made money. Still, still over what it was.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Next up, body and dash cam replacement, Digital Ally, Chris Moore.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having me. Uh, name's Chris Moore. Been working with Digital Ally in, in Gresh County now for nearly twelve years. And on a lot of the dash cameras, I've been at Houston squad cars here in the county. Uh, including all the body cameras that the officers or deputies are wearing on the road patrol, as well as on the jail side. Uh, so the gentleman that introduced me today there, uh, was wearing his eye and tight. Um, what basically we're doing is looking at, kind of renewing a lot of that technology that's basically come to end of life. It's, it's really been through its life cycle. Uh, we started shipping out dash cameras in two thousand and five. And you guys have some that aren't quite that vintage, but are getting, getting pretty close. Um, you know, so parts and pieces are. Not, not able to come by. Um, that's also true with the body cameras that, that they're using on the road patrol right now, as well as the uh, jail side. Um, you can't even get batteries for some of these now. It's just that body camera started something about ten years ago, just going to give you a, a rough idea. So. Um, the body camera I'm holding here today, and then it works in conjunction with the dash camera that you see there on the screen. Um, the county did test this out, uh, maybe two, three months back. Had some pretty good reviews on it and um, you know, we, we set them up with a cloud account and everything, kind of get adjusted and acclimated to the new technology as well as. How you do some of the other things that come on with that new technology, you know, sharing videos a little bit, uh, done a little differently now. It's all cloud based. Um, really helps save a lot of time for those individuals that have to do redaction of videos and things. Um, so we'll talk about a little bit about the hardware here. Um, again, so we're not reinventing the wheel necessarily on the in-car video side of things, but the, one of the huge advantages that the guys have when they're out there making stops is this is a ten eighty P system. Which means it looks like you're watching ESPN at home, right? That's kind of become the new video uh, standard, if you will, when you submit video to be, be reviewed and things, especially like DUI stops. Where the systems they have in the cars right now, um, you'd have a, but you wouldn't be able to make out a license plate at night, for example, you know, stuff like that. Um, so you know, the video technology's come a long way over those years, you know, it started off as four eighty P, then it went to seven twenty. And now the system that we're looking at here, as well as the body cameras ten eighty. So you get a lot more pixels, super clarity, audio is a big aspect as well. Uh, let's hit the right click here. And I, I don't want to get into the weeds on it so much to put everyone to sleep. Um, this has a lot more memory built into it aside from being a lot higher definition. Um, this can support up to four cameras in a car. I believe the quote that we have, or the quote that we have for you folks is just two cameras and that seems to suffice in almost every application. You've got the one camera going out the forward windshield and then you've got one in a prisoner partition. Uh, which also gives the ability to get audio on both that, that camera in the backseat and have infrared capabilities. So if you have to transport a prisoner, you know, several counties away, you can actually see what they're doing. Um, like a live view of what's going on in the backseat. So it's a little more comforting to those doing the transport. Um, and again, you've got super clear video clarity as well. And as you can actually see where each squad car is in the county, because it comes with its own built-in GPS. Um, which also gives the ability to not only see where the car is, but if one of the deputies is in trouble out in the field. From an administrative standpoint, they can actually activate a camera. If someone was in trouble and didn't already have the cameras going, that would get the ability to capture what was all going on during that scene. Um, it's not necessarily live streamed from the in-car video, uh, this has the ability to do live streaming at additional cost, you know, from the body camera perspective. But um, I, we didn't quote that aspect of it, um, because that is an additional charge per, per device. Um, jump forward here. So this is a little nighttime video here. If you could just kind of pause it once it kind of gets up behind the car. Do this freeze it for a second, man? Thank you. Um, you know, being in Michigan, we got a lot of the white reflective plates. Like that, that you wouldn't be able to make out what type of, even if it's a Ford pickup truck with the system that you guys have right now, honestly. Um, so this, if, if you, I know it's got a little ping coming off the white plate, but this system gives you a pretty darn clear picture of the, the plate and even sometimes the tags and things too. Um.
Now, that's the same system we're looking at?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Yep.
Exactly. So we released that system just before that, so this is an actual, no.
When's the next one ready to come out?
I, I'd imagine engineering has something in the works.
Okay.
You know, um.
I just didn't want to buy one and then too much.
No, we got a brand new one. No, 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 not, not going to do that to you.
It has happened before.
Is the, this whole system that we're quoting, it, it's, it's an entire scope from the body camera and the in-car perspective, but it is fully warranted for five years. Um, you do have the option to purchase all the hardware and everything upfront and then pay as you go on the. Uh, cloud storage aspect as well. So there's kind of two different ways to look at it. Um, see if we can jump forward here, Matt, to the next slide. And again, daytime, it, it better look great during daytime, but with the systems you have, it, you might have a hard time even making out like that Volvo. Um, unit in the background. Um, so you kind of, kind of get the idea that the technology's come a long way in fifteen roughly years.
In the picture.
Kind of think like your cell phones, you know, it's. You kind of get the general idea.
It recognize the person that's driving from that video.
Yeah, that, so little stuff like that goes a long way. Not to mention the, the body camera itself becomes the microphone. So the systems you have now, they have their own standalone microphone. And then in addition to that, they have to wear a body camera too, to where this is actually the microphone for the in-car system.
Okay.
And it all plays together. So when you go pull the video up in the, the back office cloud aspect, you've got your four views, you've got your two in-car views. And then one body camera and you can do an additional one. I don't know if they, they ride double up at night, you know, if they get more than one officer per car. But you do have that ability, uh, should you need to. This real quick is the redaction video. So this all comes with this cloud solution as well. Um, you know, you get a minor in the back of the cruiser. Now you have the ability to actually, it'll recognize not facial recognition, but it'll, it'll facial suggestion. It'll look for faces and automatically blur those individuals' faces out. So when you do have a FOI request, have to submit video. It'll help save that individual time of having, like manually draw a box around a face. Um, again, a lot more time to do actual police work than, you know, playing behind a computer screen. Uh, if you could touch that enough, man, that little redaction video. Thank you.
Yeah.
And it does have the infrared, so I know if you guys are way out of town where there's no ambient light, it'll still illuminate the backseat crystal clear, so you can see what's going on.
Right. Cool.
And jump over to the perspective. I know you guys have a lot of cruise like that, but that's how the system would kind of be laid out in each cruiser. Um, not necessarily with that tablet, but they can interface it with the computers they already have. So there's no additional cost associated with that. Um, really easy install and is the, I know you guys run a lot of miles up on the vehicles, so you could actually take this system out, put it in a new car, which you guys have been doing for a good number of years. Um, because you might get maybe what, five, six years out of car or more, and the system's going to, going to obviously run you plus that.
Is this wireless or you go hardwire them all in to?
As far as the upload aspect or?
The, the, when they put them in the car, like is there a bunch of stuff in the trunk and then you got to hardwire it all up to the front?
No, good question.
Computer, or how does that work?
I've actually got the whole thing in that little box. There's a main brain box, your two forward cameras, and that's really about it. And that's really about it, a bunch, a bunch of wiring, but everything's contained up in the front of the vehicle if I, if I tackle back there. Um.
It's all the expense. Whenever we used to build patrol cars, it's a huge pain in the ass because they'd take the headliners out and.
Yeah.
I mean, huge expense that this will hopefully alleviate when you're getting the car built.
Yeah, yep, agreed. It, it's all more self-contained in the front. And there's not like, like a lot of the old systems used to have to cut a hole in the headliner. You're not damaging cars if you lose cars in the future. So there's, it's not intrusive in the cars at all.
No more of that huge, uh, rearview mirror.
Right, right. So there, there's no mirror based system at all with this. It, it feeds right into.
What the came, what came from the factory with stays in there.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah. So it doesn't lose any functionality out of that. It just plays right along into the, uh, tablet that's the passenger seat there. Um, so those are some of the controls that they would see from a deputy standpoint. Uh, advanced down here, this is kind of what I'm holding here is the body camera. Again, it went from seven twenty P up to ten eighty P resolution. Figure this is almost like a cell phone. Um, you could actually do like a FaceTime on the field. So if a deputy has someone on one side of the county hooked up. And say, hey, is this the guy we're looking for? They could actually do a live feed or, or talk, communicate that way. And, um, so it has a lot of functionality, just like your phone does. Um, the guys can actually tag the videos directly in the device too, instead of having to come back and do that back here at the office. So again, a time saver, um, cause they want to tag them appropriately, be able to go and find those videos after the fact. Uh, it's got GPS built into it. And then if you want to do live streaming, that would be the only additional charge we have on any of our systems. Um. And it does save infrared as well, which is huge. Um, so actually, if you walk into a dark room, you know, without a flashlight on, you can make these either useful or you can deactivate them. But it emit light about from here to Steve. Um, so that, that could be helpful, or if they don't want to use that, you can shut that functionality off. And then let's say the biggest advantage these have is a, a field replaceable battery too. Almost every body camera in the marketplace. A lot like your phone, you have to replace it every two years because the battery life kind of starts losing. Um, this guy has a field replaceable battery. He can additional buy batteries. I think they're forty bucks each, pretty reasonable. Um, but you can record non-stop for almost eleven hours with this, which hardly you'd ever do, right? Um, standby, which is like your normal day of stopping, starting, making your traffic stops, you're just talking a couple of days worth on the same battery. Couple of days of, of active working.
Uh, but in order to download to your cloud, they got to put it in the, in a, uh, docking station, correct?
No, so these, as soon as you walk in the building. Technically, these, all these feed off is a wifi to upload. So that's a huge advantage as well. Um, yeah, the ones they have now, that would have to be physically plugged in to be able to send it somewhere. Um, these can work off the wifi you have right here and, and off it goes to Amazon's cloud. And then, um, you can pull it down and work with it from there.
So now is this move the whole, uh, I, I, I know what you, you're, you're bringing. Today's activity back into the department. Automatically it'll all upload. Now, I would assume that that'll save a whole lot of town of di- uh, time of downloading. Also, how does the prosecutor's office then access that?
Very good question. So we actually have a prosecutor portal that they can, they can, not so much search for video, but they can request certain video from a certain day or certain traffic stop. Certain officer, uh, for core purposes or, uh, whoever gets that FOIA request. Basically, it's simply you put an email address in there and it just sends a link to that user. And you have, uh, full control of how many days that link is good before it expires. So if it's something critical, you know, it could say a couple.
Well, I imagine you have to have something in the chain of evidence to make sure nothing gets loose.
Exactly, exactly. And, and this does, so every single video, it, from the minute it's born and uploaded is tracked as far as who looked it up. Who played it, who tried to delete it, maybe didn't have permission. So it's, it's like a living and breathing document. So very good question.
Uh, which I was imagining it'll save a whole lot of time.
Yeah, so a lot of the technologies come along with these things to, to really free the officers up to actually do more, more police work. Just a little.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this, here's just a little footage here, just getting, getting an idea of what to expect with, from the actual body camera perspective. Might be a little language in this. Yeah, we, yeah, we could probably, we could probably fast forward a little bit. I think she kind of hooks around the park and goes into McDonald's, so. The, the body cameras again that they're using definitely wouldn't have this type of crystal clear image, especially at nighttime.
It's as clear as you want to ever get it, even with your own eyes, so.
Bounce forward that you guys kind of get the idea there. Um. This, this shows some of the infrared. If, if that's being used, basically if, if it just senses no light, it just kicks on, so it's black and white and then it clicks back to color once it has ambient light. Those are the outside of the car here. That kind of clicks over.
Yeah.
So again, some, some departments don't like using the infrared. It's totally up to you and how you want to configure the devices. Because it's a, you know, our human eye doesn't see in the dark, but some people like having that functionality. So it's. We can, we can set it to where it does that, or we can set it to where it doesn't be that.
Yeah.
Does. You said it'll come as far as me. Could I see it if you had that on and it's dark and the infrared kicks on? Can I see it as a suspect?
What's that? Have a target of some kind.
Well, some of the.
Somebody shoot them.
Is black and you can't see it. I'm wondering, does it light up something so that it gives someone a, a target to shoot at first?
To get you to answer, Steve. Yeah, cause I've never really been on the other, other.
That would be my only concern will be if it's a, you know, I don't want them to be putting up. You know, that glowing red on their, on their front of their chest.
Yeah, I know, even with our older, like eight hundred mirrors that are, um, those are blackout.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming that it's gonna be, but I would want to know for sure before we turn it on. Certainly wouldn't want them on.
I will find out. Uh, this.
About the buzzing, does it do that like? That loud buzz when you heard him open the door and it goes, cause it converted to turning that thing on. Does it continually do that throughout the time you are wearing it or not?
Only if you configure to do so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sometimes you're trying to sneak around in the dark, you don't want some.
Cause they know. It would be a little more covert, so there's a covert mode that, that quiets it down. Um, this is show some of the different mounting options. I think they tested the, uh, click fast magnet and really enjoyed that one. Um, again, and then we have some molly type mounts. I know some of the deputies wear the molly vests and things to walker carriers. Um, so. Quite a few different options there, but the field replaceable battery is one huge differentiator that, that we have that, that I don't know of anyone else that does. Um, because again, like a lot of the body cameras out there, once that battery loses its, its juice. It's not removable. So now you're buying a whole new device to where here you can just pop in a fresh battery. And the neat thing is you can actually do that on the fly. Um, so if this is recording now, take the battery out and you get about five minutes of internal battery recording. That gives you time to pop a fresh battery in. So that's kind of a nice advantage as well. And this one, that's, doesn't apply to you guys. Um, any, any questions on the actual updated physical hardware that, that you guys can think of?
You guys offer a program, let's say we, we buy into this whole thing, right? Um, there's obviously going to be a reoccurring fee for the storage, correct? Um, I know some of the companies, when you buy in like that, then at some point in time, like two to five years from now. You can pay a much smaller fee because you'll take all of those back and you get the latest, greatest new stuff because technology. Just like you said, in, in your technology department, they're already working on the next greatest, best thing beyond that. I mean, those are, that's just the way this system works.
Correct.
Um. I don't want to see us get to the point where we are now. Twelve to fifteen years of using the same thing and, you know, you know, that it's. You know, we're, we're, we're making huge advancements and, and we missed the middle part and, and all that stuff. So. That's where I'm like, is there a trade-in program or something that we can get in on so that, you know, four years from now? That you, you can come back if you're still with Digital Ally and, uh, and say, you know, for. Okay, if this costs us this many hundred thousand dollars for half of that, you guys can trade all that stuff in and get the latest, greatest new stuff.
Yeah.
Is that a, is that something that you guys have a program that we can like almost sign up for right, right away? Just so that we know we're staying on the cutting edge of this stuff. Cause this is where things get. You know, four or five years from now, the economy's in the crapper. And it just passes by and then it's like, oh my God, when are we ever going to have this? And I know that some of this is ARPA money, right, Chris? That we're looking at using for this?
Um, that's up for discussion.
Okay, so you know, that was a one-time deal and it's never happened before and probably never happening again. So you know, you gotta look at those kinds of things as to how are we going to continue to stay on the cutting edge of the technology? Cause things are changing and it's going to continue to change. And I just want to make sure that we're getting in on a program that we can continue to. Advance as the technology advances. I don't want fifteen years from now, you know, our guys using the same stuff. It's got a new fresh battery in it, but they're using the same stuff that, you know, a guy's getting ready to retire, started using it ten years into his career. Soon see him get some new stuff, so.
Yeah, and in my eleven and a half years I've been there, uh, every time we come out with a new product. Of course, you want to kind of get people onto the new product. So that's where that comes in as far as a trade-in, trade-up type program. Um, right now, as it stands, you know, if you did the five-year scope, where you're covered by a five-year warranty. Basically, at the end of that five years, you own outright all the hardware, you know, if, if you go that route instead of buying all the hardware upfront. But, um, at that point, you'd have like brand-new device, brand-new batteries, you know? And then whenever the next version of Pro Two comes out, you know, then we could entertain that for sure. And then just kind of re-look at that contract.
Okay, yeah, that's, I just want to make sure that that's a piece of the puzzle because, um. I know that, you know, some of your competition does some stuff like that. There, you know, I mean, everybody's got, you're not the only game in town. And so I just want to be sure that that's a digital ally thing as well, that there can be, um, that trade-up option. Four to five years down the, down the road. If you've got it, you know, warranties are starting to wear out on these things.
Yeah.
It's a piece of electronics. Nobody carries one of these for five years anymore, you know what I mean? They don't, they've got a new one. So, you know, these are the thing that are protecting us, you know, liability-wise, life and death-wise. I mean. That's the, that's the, why I want to make sure that we stay on the cutting edge of what's the best thing.
Absolutely. And that's, yeah, like, you know, we don't have the, the two version and, you know, not even on the scope right now, but. Um, the in-car systems, you know, just so you know, they, they don't, they don't innovate as quick, you know, um. You know, maybe they might jump up to four K at one point down the road, but you know, how much of that do you need sometimes?
Exactly.
Um.
So Chris, this, this is a project that, um, according to our purchase process or policy, needs to be bid out a month.
Yeah.
And you had, uh, you, you, you have a program that actually would help assist us in doing that, is that correct?
Yeah, through the source well.
Can you, can you speak to that? So the, the commissioners know that this isn't something that we're looking to approve now. We still have a process that we, we need to go through. This is just more of a, a pitching, information gathering.
Yeah, we recently partnered with them, um, and I believe you guys have been using them for some other things. Um, exactly how that shakes out, I really can't speak to that right now. I have to get one of the source will people to really put that in writing. Um, but, but the way I understand it is they, they put it out as like a national bid type thing. Um, and it fills that, that need. So, um. I can, I can do some digging on that.
And yeah, that you can just communicate with, with us, but I just wanted us four to know that there's still more of a process to go through for us to fulfill what we need to fulfill.
For sure.
My question now is for Matt. This whole system, do we have the technology to run it properly? So it's not creating a huge pain in your hind end or those two guys over there's hind end. So if this thing actually works, because if it's don't, they're junk and they don't, I mean, it's not, you might as well stick with what you got if it don't work right. And our internet will actually handle those transfers. Our current internet wifi system will actually handle this stuff. That's, I want to be sure we're not, I don't want it to, that to be the Achilles heel when you pull your trucker up front. And it didn't download, you know what I mean? Cause I lived through that nightmare years ago and it didn't work. And then you're losing video, didn't know you were losing video and it, um, it can be problematic. I just want to make sure what we have is Gracia County, our internet is fast enough and, and durable enough to handle. Cause video takes a lot of data. I mean, it's, it's huge and ten eighty P is huge. So that's, I want to make sure that. Where we've got what we need to make sure this.
I would assume their tech people will have to get with our tech people. They'll have to iron that out before we do.
I just want to make sure, for you're our IT guy, I want to make sure that it all works so that we can make sure it works.
And then like Matt said, access point, so one access point could support five cars at one time. Could be a pretty good rate of transfer. So I don't know how often you'd have more than five come in at any one point, but. But yeah, we, exactly right, is we'd get our IT folks working with Matt and his team, make sure that the infrastructure's there. Um, and then on the, the quote, and you know, which, you know, if it, if it does go out to bid or whatever, definitely have everything in place to where our folks come on site. And do all the configuration once things are installed to make sure it's communicating the proper way. And, and then also do the training, which is huge too, because you can have the best product in the world, but people don't know how to use it. It's, it's not a great start. So, uh, that's what our team does. They come up from Kansas and actually boots on the ground and they're here for a couple of days to make sure everyone's comfortable. And it's working what best, what works best for your county, because no two departments using the same way. So, uh, I'll just add that as well.
Lock roofness of these things, since we had our little incident last year about this type of year, what, uh?
It's IP sixty-seven, which means it can be fully submerged in our three feet of water for up to thirty minutes.
Okay, good.
Uh, also passes like a six-foot drop test in the solid service and, uh, dustproof. So. Everything we can come up here with in Michigan, it, it better be able to withstand. And, um, you can, you can even go as far, like, like I said, you get treated like a cell phone. They got like a rubber case that you could put around it to help. You know, if it does take a knock, it might, might, uh, help things out. That's what, in that lower right-hand corner there, that little kind of like a.
Oh, yeah, glove sleeve that goes around it.
Yeah, I mean, you can purchase additional screen protectors, but honestly, things covered by warranty.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, that's just some of the additional parts and pieces and things.
Does that have a finder on it? In other words, let's say an officer has that camera on him and he gets in a scuffle and they're in a stove bank. And there goes the camera.
It does. So it does have GPS right in there, latitude and longitude in the corner to be able to go back and, and relocate that.
Kind of hard if you lost your game.
Yeah, or a foot pursuit through a cornfield, you know, it, it go back and put them, I think it's within like three feet or something. It's, it's pretty.
None of them have a alarm, so if you get no, close to it, you can activate it so you can hear it. I'm telling you.
It's a good idea.
I could be right in front of it and not hear it or see it. And if I, I hit my watch and my phone goes off, I, oh, there it is.
Yeah. Find, find my Apple device. That's, uh, that'd be a nice feature.
Just thinking about it.
Yeah, that kind of stuff. Yeah, a lot of this stuff comes from, you know, the daily use that we use. Yeah. Good point. Um, definitely appreciate the time because if there are any further questions on, on that aspect of it. And, uh, thank you for working with us for the last fifteen years or so.
Absolutely. Thank you for your demonstrations, Steph.
Did you have any comment?
Just to your point with, uh, uploading, we only had two cameras. We had zero issue with the guys being here. Um, and that's one of the things that we have discussed. They come in here multiple times. It's not like all that stuff's going to be stored for twelve hours.
Yeah.
Everybody come in and dump it as they come in and break or do a reporter or whatever the stuff goes in.
Good.
So it shouldn't be an issue.
So it's every time it links to it.
Yeah.
If it gets broke up, because they got to leave out a hot call, it catches back up when they get back. Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
You.
Phone system replacement bids. Matt, you're up.
So we've got a few quick slides to, uh, go through tonight for the phone system optimization project. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on this project. Um, so our phone contract with our current provider, who is Windcell, expires at the end of this fiscal year. Uh, this fiscal year, we had budgeted a phone system optimization capital improvement project. Um, at a hundred thousand dollars on this fiscal year's budget. We sent out a request for proposals for this project back in April and those closed out back in May. And I've gone through a pretty lengthy evaluation process. We got ten bids back, so I met with each of the providers and went through their demonstrations. Um, I also took vacation in that time, so it did take a while to kind of get through this process. Some of the things we hope to accomplish with this new phone system is uh, we want to make it as user friendly for both the users. And both for IT, because currently, when I make updates in our phone system, I have to work with Windtel to make those updates. Then we have to propagate them in their systems, our systems and in multiple places, which takes quite a bit of time to do. One of the other things uh, we'd like to do is be able to customize our auto attendance and our call flow in house as well, which these systems would allow us to do. Currently, we work with Windtel on those, so that's like when uh, you call into a department, some of the departments have an automated message. Press one to get to this person, press two to get to this person. Windtel basically does all of that work for us, we, we want to start doing that in house. And then other things this new system will do, we'll be able to do more e faxing than we do currently. A lot of departments have e faxing, but we can actually make it so that more end users are able to do e faxing. Uh, this version of e faxing is both C G S compliant and HIPAA compliant, which are our two biggest roadblocks with e faxing currently. Is that our current e faxing systems uh, don't have any compliance uh, stickers on them like this one would. We also, part of this project is to replace all of the phone hardware equipment for the end user, so the actual desk phone that they use. Um, that equipment, uh, half of our fleet of phone equipment is about. I think it's between five and eight years old, and then the other half is like older than ten years old. So it's definitely time to get upgrading this uh, phone equipment. A lot of our workstations actually run through our phone equipment too. So if you're one of those users that has a really old phone at their desk, it has the potential for you to have a really slow network connection at your desk. Because your desk PC actually goes through that old phone. I should get my proposals first, this is the list of proposals that came through um. Uh, I eliminated a lot of them just based on how expensive their monthly recurring fees were. Currently, we pay around um, under four thousand dollars a month. For our phone service through Windtel, a lot of these contracts came in way more than that, so I just eliminated them. Because I, I mean, we do need these, these modern things, but we're able to do them at, at lower costs than a lot of these people were presenting, so. Some of the other um, vendors that I eliminated were our current, uh, telephone provider, Windtel. They uh, they pitched a. Not a super user friendly system, I thought, and also it required a lot of on, on premises components. And we would like it to be more of a cloud system, so that we don't have to manage and replace that, the lot of those equipment. So the recommendation I'd like to make is to go with communications technology as our phones uh, phone modernization vendor. Um, and they would be implementing a go to connect phone system solution. So like I was talking about this system, it includes all of the features and functionality that I talked about a little bit ago. Already talked about those. Um, yeah, so to go back to this table, the one that I'm recommending is the third one down on this list, it's a. With a recurring monthly cost of about thirty five hundred dollars and then an installation cost of around twelve thousand dollars. So the twelve thousand dollars is how much it'll take for like basically project work, labor work to get us up and running. And then the monthly recurring fee includes the phone lines, um, all of the direct dial numbers. Like if you're a, an individual employee and I can actually call you directly, it includes that, a type of a phone line too. It includes all of those auto attendance and the faxing. It also includes all of the new phone hardware. So we currently, I think, purchased all of our end user like phone desk phones um. I believe initially all at once is part of the project and we just slowly replace them over time with this model. We're basically leasing the phones, they're covered by contract, if they fail, we get a new phone. It's just a built in recurring fee that's included in our bill.
Well, these do the paging system, so if there's an emergency or anything, you can hit. Like I know the sheriff has the ability to page if something, if Fathom Muddle Bad Shit's going on, he can page everybody.
It does have a system very similar so that it's not exactly set up the same way, but.
There is, there is a way to do that, okay, alright.
This is an example of what one of the desk phones would look like, so. Any questions for me, I know I went through that pretty quick, but I.
Pretty sporty looking.
Really like, went to all of the, the weeds unless you guys want me to, so.
Pretty high speed looking phone right there.
Yeah, I mean, it's a desk phone. It does nothing for me.
Not a cell phone.
He's the most big guy now, never forget to, you know.
Make sure it's there.
It's not very often that. The people that come in with the lowest bid also are providing everything that you're looking for them to provide.
I mean, they weren't the lowest necessarily, but they were on the low end and I'm really good about this product. I believe like we're gonna be able to hit their ground running, but then just get going and be able to make adjustments. One of the things that we run into is it's just really difficult to make adjustments with our current phone system. Somebody's last name changes or they get married, you know, I have to update them like six different places. And then I have to reach out to Windtel so they can make sure color ID gets updated too. So it's, it's just a very time consuming process just for little things.
So you have more control over this system?
I will have all, all of the control, I mean, I, I will be able to manage it the way that I want to, but I don't, you know, the equipment's not mine. And if we lose internet connection, the phones will go down, but they do that now anyway, so. So my recommendation would be to go with the, with a communications technology. But I would um, caution the board against uh, authorizing the specific amount on this invoice only because um. We did a really great job at inventorying our current phone system and working with all the departments to catch every line and try to identify lines. But I know that there's going to be lines that we just haven't captured properly. Or there will be pieces, actual phone, desk phones somewhere in the building that I haven't seen and we just don't have an inventory list somewhere. So I anticipate this amount going up slightly, but you know, not doubling or anything.
You want, what would you like to go up to?
I mean, the capital improvement project's already budgeted at a hundred thousand dollars. I don't think for him to go over that, and I would even recommend like capping that down to fifty and just giving me a cap there.
If you got it in the budget. Just leave it that way and you don't have to really do anything, do we?
Right.
It's in the budget.
It's a primitive vendor.
Oh, it's a primitive vendor.
It was what you're going with.
Yeah.
And, and, and we trust you implicitly, if we didn't, you wouldn't be here.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
You had a motion to approve the vendor, the recommendation?
Yeah, this uh, motion to approve the communications technology uh, and for what's budgeted.
Built by George, supported by Jan to uh, approve the cap on. Well, to prove the goal of capital communications technologies.
Up to a hundred thousand.
Up to, yeah.
And the capital improvement plan up to a hundred thousand dollars.
This was a hundred fifty.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Sopsi?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes, motion carried.
Okay, good.
Next up.
Thank you.
Sheila, seven for the prosecuting attorney.
Yes, so hopefully this will be taken easy. So we now find ourselves in a situation that we do not have a chief assistant prosecuting attorney anymore. Jennifer Shepherd left on Friday, so Laura is now got to find a new chief assistant prosecuting attorney. And so what we are asking is for her to be given the authority to hire anywhere on that scale. Um, just because we know how difficult it is to get an attorney to begin with. Um, but we hopefully will be coming, getting somebody that's got some experience. And so we would like to give her the authority while working with Chris and I to make sure it's appropriate, but for her to be able to hire up anywhere on that scale.
A couple of questions for, did we know that she was gonna retire or didn't she retire or quit or?
She retired and she went to other employment and we did not know.
Just left, yeah.
No, as you recall, Laura was here not too long ago requesting more uh, to hire an attorney. Because she was a year and a half without one, because we just couldn't meet the employment criteria. Uh, we did that and within. Sure period of time. After that, we had a person and, and if you haven't met the young man, he's an outstanding young man, he's really, he, she made a good hire. Yeah, so.
I'll make a motion that we give her. The ability to take care of this.
On the, on the scale provider. I'll support that.
Thank you.
Motion by Jan, supported by George, to allow the prosecuting attorney to. Go to the top of the base scale essentially.
How many assistants prosecutors do we have?
Uh, plus the chief.
And, and plus the chief.
It's a very important job.
Very cool. Thank you very much.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Osnay, motion carried. General fund draft budget presentation.
Great, everybody's favorite. Riveting. I'm gonna run through.
Honestly, the audience keeps thinning out.
It does.
When he puts finance laughs.
It's very true. I go ahead and share my screen, I'm gonna go over uh, some statistics real quick and then I'll go over my synopsis of it. So every year in our budget book, I do put together uh, some running stats of how our budget looks this year and how it versus how it looked in the past. Uh, you will notice that uh, the first thing that sticks out highlighted there in orange is our suggested budget going forward. Uh, we have, we're looking at seventeen point one five million dollars in revenues coming in. Uh, this is because we did have a, a max out on real property, a five percent increase in real property and tax collections. Which the treasurer's office is starting to collect right now, that is due in September. Um, actually, it's next year is when the five percent is, you're collecting for a current fiscal year rate. The expenditures are up seventeen point five seven million dollars from fifteen point four four. Um, and we'll go over some of those specifics uh, in a minute here. Looking at in general operating revenues. It's broke out between real estate and personal property. If you've heard this presentation before, personal property is where our renewable energy taxable income is recorded. It's going up from three point one million to four point one million this year. Uh, reason being, we have two turbine farms that went from in construction. Uh, from fifty percent taxable to completed, one hundred percent taxable. Um, on top of that, we have two solar farms that are going on to the tax roll next year for the first time under construction. So they will be, both be hitting at fifty percent next year. Um, they will be our first solar farms, uh, industrial solar farms that we will be taxing as a county.
Where are they at, is that Pine River?
One of them is Pine River and the other is spanned between North Star and Washington Township. So the one that Commissioner Sopsi likes driving by.
North Star, what was the other one?
Washington.
Washington, okay.
Yep. When we look at our expenditures, we see our salaries are, are going from six million to six point seven seven million in the general fund. Uh, these numbers are reflective of both the wage study. That was uh, implemented in the courthouse and it also takes into effect two years worth of wages under the sheriff's office. The reason that it takes in two years of wages is because we have not yet done an amendment to our current fiscal year. Of which uh, the sheriff's office was awarded uh, nine percent for year one of the contract. But then this increase also takes into effect the five percent of next year. Uh, benefits have gone up. Also, a lot of the benefits that we have here at the county are driven by wages. Uh, for example, uh, social security and Medicaid is, is considered a benefit. Um, so every time you earn one, an additional dollar, you pay another seven point four five percent uh, in, in both of those FICA taxes. As you know, healthcare has gone up each year. Um, I believe for a family, uh, healthcare went from a little over nineteen thousand to almost twenty one thousand dollars. Just for that, of family plan over this.
That's a bargain. And that's a bargain.
Went up, uh, I believe it went up about thirteen hundred dollars, so nineteen seven to just over twenty.
The thing was going up.
Uh, and then we look at our pension costs, which was a part of that, um, which is growing from one point four to one point five million dollars over the. I'm gonna swing back to my narrative uh, and go over that with you for just a minute. So the first thing that you'll notice is that this proposed budget for our general fund does run a deficit, a deficit of four hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. Now, there are some one time expenses that I am proposing to this board for our general fund that we take care of in this upcoming year. The reason that I'm suggesting that we do it in this upcoming year is because we do have those new turbine farms coming online. And the solar farms coming online, so that gives us a, a. A one time that will be uh, depleting surplus, or not surplus, um, infusion of, of tax money that uh, we will be seeing. Part of these, these projects that I'm proposing, one of them is to appropriate one million dollars to the airport authority. If we were to appropriate one million dollars to the airport authority fund, we would generate a significant amount of interest on that uh, every year. I would estimate somewhere between forty thousand and sixty thousand dollars would be a possibility. That would go a long ways to creating an estate for the airport to operate on. The idea is that this would be enough money, seed money for the airport authority. To operate within itself as an enterprise fund and to the foreseeable future. And by that, I mean twenty, thirty years, we would not have to inject any more money in that. You'll see in a couple of weeks when the um, airport manager comes in during the authority meeting. Uh, he's been selling a lot of fuel, I mean, we're looking at. Almost twice as much as we have been in the past.
Yeah.
And that's going to be another revenue stream.
And it's gonna keep building too, that, that gets out.
And the more planes that we get to land there, the more opportunity there could be for a future um, mechanic. Which then again would add to more wheels on the ground.
And maybe even a more restaurant.
The, the second item that I, I am suggesting that we fund, a one time fund would be to completely pay off our OPEB liability that we have on our books. Uh, our OPEB liability is four hundred and forty thousand dollars as of nine thirty twenty twenty three.
Nine thirty what, twenty three?
Yeah, I would suggest waiting until our nine thirty twenty four report is done to see what our liability is there. As we know, our uh, the, the markets have increased over the last twelve months. I would expect that our liability would in return decrease. I would not want to send this entire amount and send too much money, because it is a trust fund, you can't withdraw it until it's over. So um, but I did budget for that in here. It is possible, it is, you know, it, we can balance this budget should we want to. But at the same time, our savings, our fund balance, we're expected to grow from seven point two million dollars. Last year to seven point five million dollars at the end of this year. We do have the reserves to be able to take care of these and it will not have a negative impact on the financial um, aspect of the coming.
In other words, a balanced budget.
Well. Coming from savings, the withdrawal from savings would balance.
It would balance our, our operating budget.
We will not have to borrow money.
Right, exactly.
In order to.
Point is, you, you're gonna have a balanced budget going forward.
Does anybody have any questions or thoughts or discussion, you know, based on those two fairly large items that I just threw out?
I have a question for you. In the back of your mind. And say this is what we would go with. Is there anything else there that pop up in the next few years that we would have to worry about? Is there anything else that we should be looking at also now?
Related to the general fund, um, you know, if there was a, a downturn in the markets, that would adversely affect our pension fund. So at any point in time where we decide in the future that we'd want to help offset something like that, I believe we have a. Six and a half or seven million dollar deficit in our pension fund right now that we're trying to, to work on. That would be the only major item at this point in time that I think. If we were saving up money for, that we would throw money in that direction to help with that line.
Another question I have too is we've had some bonds out that we pay on.
Yes.
One was, one was for Murris at one time.
Correct.
How far, how close are we getting to any of those payments?
Twenty twenty-six.
On September thirtieth of twenty twenty-six would be our last payment for that.
That's good.
Yes.
Okay, that's robust. Two year. Would you say the month was?
September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. It's the last.
September, oh, it's two thousand.
And we'll never take another bond out dated nine thirty ever again, will we? Creates havoc on our books.
Comes right at the end of the fiscal year. Misses everything.
June thirtieth from here on out.
Cut out.
Not that we will ever take another bond out, but.
Never say never, but yeah.
So that's all the questions I had.
Okay.
So basically. If we pay both of these things, the OPEB, the whatever it's gonna be, hopefully less than this for some, but then simply because the markets are better, correct?
Right, that, that would be the expectation.
What the exact number will be, but it could be. Let's just say it went down twenty-eight thousand, it'll be right at four hundred thousand, okay? And then the other is the, the one time. Uh.
Airport.
Airport money that you wanna set aside. Where will that take our fund balance down to if we do these then?
We would be, well, right now, the proposed budget has a four hundred and twenty eight thousand dollar deficit.
Uh huh.
We are expecting to have a seven point five million dollar balance to begin the year. So we'd be right around. Just over seven million dollars.
It'll still keep us over seven million.
Yes.
And then your percentages of.
With the million out, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that keeps us um. In your percentages of how much your fund balance, we're not gonna be putting ourselves in a position that. Unless something like you have worded here, something unforeseen happens, where we get ourselves in a position where we have to borrow money to pay raises and things like that.
Oh, heavens no.
That's, that's my concern is to make sure we always have that.
Apparently, we're light, we're light years away from even having to think about.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to be sure. Be, you know, your overall size, your budget, but.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna have to get in the position where we're paying interest on money when we didn't have to.
So with the current budget, we are still looking at with, with the wage study implemented with the. First two years of the three-year sheriff contract. We are still sitting at sixty-one percent. Salary and benefit.
Good.
Compared to revenue coming in. This budget also does include, um, I did throw in there. The body and dash cam projects under the general fund.
Okay.
Not under.
Not under ARPA.
The ARPA fund.
Okay.
But once ARPA is uh, the, the program is over, that money then would be transferred to the general fund anyway.
Good.
So there's another special project that it would get you. So the next thing that I would like to walk you through is the summary by department of what the expenditures are gonna look like. So this is a, a required page by law within our budget so that the board of commissioners can see. Each department's expenditures, a three-year trend.
Is, is something we have in our board book, like ages it then, so.
Page would be, let me tell you.
One twenty-three.
It's number three of the budget.
It's in the fifty-six pages.
Yep.
During the budget.
On this page, but I have a three too. Oh, I see.
Yep, so that's the entire.
Looking on the board.
So I need to preface to say that not every uh department has provided feedback in their budget. Um, some of them have provided feedback and I have not worked it in. Um. This would be my best guess of seeing where the budget is going to land, but this document is going to change every day between now and the day that it's passed.
When we present it.
I will always find something that needs to be tweaked. The longer I look at it, the more things that I'm gonna see. Um, and that goes for every one of the department heads. I will say that has been distributed to them. Um.
But you've been doing this enough for, you know, within. A hundred thousand dollars one way or the other.
Exactly. And I also know that even if a department head wants to change something. Typically, by the time we're done talking about it, it'll affect the budget like point zero zero three percent.
That's what I'm saying is that it, it's a, it's a minute. And, and with all the changes that had to be made, it will, and no, it won't even come close to that, but I'm just putting it out there as an example.
Mm-hmm.
I see, we took a PICA.
That was actually one of, one of George's questions too.
Yeah.
So when you look at the board of commissioners, one of the items that we have been running through uh that department. Is the turbine lawsuit expenses. So when we get the bill from the lawyer. We, we pay the bill out of board of commissioners, then we, um, then we bill each of the individual. Millage holders, whether it's a township, uh parks and rec. City, we bill them their portion of it and then it gets deposited back into the board of commissioners as a revenue. So what you're gonna notice is that departments with employees, you're going to see. Those departments expenses went up. Um, the twenty-three, twenty-four amended. Budget does not have the wage study amendment or the sheriff contract amendment in it yet. The reason I did that is because I wanted you to see the exact effect of executing both of those. So you can see how much those went up. So you can see. We gave this amount of money to our employees uh as raises so that they could, you know, keep up with, with the cost of living. We will make those amendments. We will make those um the last. Meeting in September, um, but for now, uh, I wanted you to be able to see this. Um. Overall. The, the very first subtotal there in, under general government. Expenditures went up from seven point eight to eight point two eight. Um, that falls directly in line with the amount. That the wage study increased. Um, so when I. Figured out that budget, I went back to the meeting where I presented the wage study. And that was about in a three point seven million or three point, or three hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase to. Uh, salaries and benefits for the courthouse. And um, you could see that it's up about. Four point four. For that, uh.
How much was it, three hundred what?
It was about three hundred and seventy thousand. And the overall expenses for the courthouse went up about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, so the, the estimate was good. The presentation to you was good.
Yep.
Obviously, we have additional expenditures that went up, not just salaries. Public safety, four point four five million to four point eight four. Uh, considering the investments that we've put in there, the cost of. Healthcare provided to people that are in the jail, gone up significantly. You were a part of.
Yeah.
Seeing those contracts and how those contracts went, um. And considering the raises that we were able to give our road patrol and corrections officers. Um, that is a, a very reasonable and expected increase that we had coming. Very bottom, under other, we have appropriations to agencies that went up a million dollars directly related to the suggestion for the airport. And appropriations to other funds, um, which is directly related to funding the OPEB. Life. Now. I'm gonna stop talking for a few minutes and let you guys ask some questions about any departments that you have, but. For the most part, I think after that explanation, it, it. Is out pretty.
Just supporting documentation.
And behind each of these departments, there is a detailed budget that we can refer to should you want to, if you haven't.
Just wish the printing was a little larger. Chris, I read this. I had my magnifying glass.
Look at it on here, you can.
Oh, yeah, but I was on the paper.
Yeah.
It's a lot easier to do paper when you're looking at it.
Yep.
Overall, I am very happy with the way the process went for the general fund, you know? I don't feel like I ran into anything. That surprised me.
Did that surprise you?
It did. Not being surprised, it always surprises me.
Honest to God, it, it surprised him that it went as well as it did and it came out as good as it did. Yeah, he was quite pleased with himself. I can bring him down a little bit.
Bring him back down?
Yeah, bring him back down. No, it just, ever, he's done this, how many years now have you done this, Chris? Uh, seven or eight years?
Seven years.
Figure.
Eight. Oh, eight.
It's the eighth budget.
Yeah, he, he was gonna say eight years. I'll tell you what. I noticed stuff.
No, we got a good process now too, you know? Becky knows how to help me and. Get me set up uh to be able to whip through it pretty quickly. Department heads are very cooperative. They know what type of questions to ask me and. How to communicate about it and it's, it's just, it's gone really well.
What's this here, raise the age?
Raise the age? Raise the age is a, a new program in juvenile court. I believe it started this fiscal year, may have been. Two years ago, but it raised the age of juveniles from seventeen to eighteen. To be able to go through the juvenile system rather than the adults. So, not sure how much longer that'll be funded, but as of now, the state of Michigan pays for that.
As of now.
Yep.
Always as of now, what's the same.
Yeah. Had good intention.
Of course, it helps to have an outstanding board.
Our leader at the top.
We might wanna start railing someone.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're gonna talk about it.
Or we can get them stickers.
That just.
So my plan is to, at the next meeting, to actually have the budget book completed. Um, we, and then we'll go over. The changes in the general fund. We'll go over the special revenue funds. And then you'll still have another two weeks to be able to go over it, to meet with me, to ask questions, um.
It's a little, I can barely see that.
I will, uh.
That's all right. I have a microphone glass.
Yeah, it's September third.
I believe that is.
I think.
Yeah.
Double check that, but I think you're right.
You should bring it in and put it on there.
September, September third, the day after Labor Day.
Then uh, item ten on today's agenda, I believe we'll be setting the public hearings for. Passing the. Budget. There are no questions. I can go onto the capital projects list and.
And be fine with me if you do that. I like them.
So, for our capital projects list, uh Sheila helped me put this together. We do a five-year plan. And because she is an overachiever, she added a sixth year. Um, but we're seeing, um, you know, in our, our, our current year, we had uh, in, in IT, we had a hundred thousand dollar. Home system upgrade. We had. Other items in there. Uh, this year Matt's going for a, a significant number of smaller. Projects to upgrade and make sure that our, our systems are handling well. Buildings and grounds, we have our typical cyclical, um, replacement items, um. And just so you know, when we approve the budget, we're only approving current year capital projects.
Yeah, one of the projections, exactly.
There's capital projects in the next four or five years, you're not approving those.
No, no.
Um, it's, it's.
It's, it's, but it's a good tool for us to use to see if we gotta throw a little money away or what's coming up. I just noticed something. I never noticed that one. What's a dado backup?
Better IT.
Uh, it's way out there in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, but I just noticed it. Yeah, tell me what it's all about.
Say backup device that does automated uh restoration testing, which our uh insurance providers keep asking us about.
Okay, so why are we got it out so far?
We got it out so far because our current backup system.
The backup system's what? I'm a little hard of hearing. You have to speak up.
Our current backup system is working fine right now, so I just put it down harder just so that we're all aware that we wanna do it at some point.
Okay, well, keep an eye on it. We can put or push it up if we need to. We don't wanna get caught.
I think he's getting pressured from outside sources to get something like this, but it's not something that we absolutely have to.
I understand, I understand. And, and you're being frugal, but. Sometimes frugal shuts you down too, so you gotta be careful.
Well, at the same time, it's, we, if, if, if an outside entity like the state of Michigan is going to pressure us to do something that's not necessary.
Right.
We need to maintain our integrity and say, you can provide us funding for it too. We'll do it when we need to.
You know, you don't wanna shoot yourself in the foot, but I just. Equipment wise, I just didn't want us to have a failure.
Absolutely.
In the sheriff's budget, I mean, we're, I see the dash cam, body and dash cam thing is in there for this year. Um. What about, um, Matt worked on this before when, uh. Mobile CAD system, so the guys actually have a CAD system in their car that works. Um, that's gonna be an expensive thing, I'm sure. And then uh, also the radios in the car. Uh, I know they just got new prep radios, radios in the car is gonna be inexpensive.
I think we got a four-year plan right there under the sheriff too for replacement radios. And vehicle radars. Do you see that?
Okay, I, I was, read the radar. I didn't see the radio, the radio thing, okay.
And then the KAN system, um.
Cause we're gonna start doing it, you know, every so many, every year then, cause some of them radios are beyond.
Well.
Life expectancy. There is no parts for them. You're robbing Peter to pay ball to keep them.
There's different ways to fund that.
Mm-hmm.
Steve, so we need to have a chat. How we gonna, how we might fund that?
Yep. I just, I wanna make sure that they work when. I just, I wanna make sure that they work when.
Well, I agree with you.
They're supposed to be coming to your house, you want the radio.
And so the body and dash camera replacement, that is a little bit high, that's gonna be adjusted.
I'm excited about that, I think that's really gonna be a. A great tool. Save somebody a a lot of time. Tops can be out competent instead of having.
I would like to uh compliment staff this year um. A lot of times historically, when we're when we throw a report like this together, we'll we'll come up with uh the best guess. And for almost everything, I know people went out and got actual legitimate estimates for our. So. And for the first time, we uh Parks and Rec is participating with us, so thank you to John for that also.
Long way on Parks and Rec, I. I like that young man a lot. Doing a good job.
So that is what I have for you, I will present it to you again, we can go, I if there's any changes, I will highlight those for you. It will be a part of the final. Budget book, so we will. See that again.
We were at number nine, delinquent tax fund payment.
So there was uh some mention of the. Raphael settlement, was that correct? Um this is gonna be where I if you wanna ask um. My treasurer to expand on that, after I present this, it would it would be an inappropriate spot. I'm trying to find my memo right now. So about, I'm gonna go without them, so about twelve to fourteen months ago, uh this this board uh made a request to our treasurer to calculate. What um surplus would be in the. Delinquent tax fund that would policy would allow to be transferred to the general fund. Uh at that time, Terry came to the board and reported, I believe it was seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Uh was calculated as a surplus, and this board did request that it would be transferred to the general fund this fiscal year. The transfer is done. One at the beginning of the fiscal year and one towards the end of the fiscal year after settlement and everything has all shook out. Uh the first transfer was made. Um the second transfer has not yet been made, it has not yet needed to be made. I'm gonna request that this board foregoes the second transfer and maintains that balance in the delinquent tax fund for two different reasons. Uh the first reason is that. The original thought. Was that the Board of Commissioners wanted to bring that money into the general fund to be managed by the Board of Commissioners. So that it could be invested at ways that it was not being invested at that time. I think that everybody on this board would agree that. The management of the funds in the delinquent tax fund has vastly improved uh the the. The treasurer. Has changed the way that she invests not only the funds in the delinquent tax fund, but the funds throughout the entire county. And we are able to maximize the returns on that um. On top of that, the operations in the treasurer's department over the last year have. Increased just dramatically from where they were when they started to where they are now. Um processes have been improved, internal controls exist where there weren't internal controls anymore. And I think we should all feel very comfortable with those funds over there. Um the second reason that we should, I think we should consider not having that transfer. Is exactly what you heard at your um meeting that you attended yesterday. Is that there is the potential for us to have future lawsuits down the road uh related to. Tax sale foreclosures um. Do you have any question, would you like Terry to talk about that?
I just, it was first I'd ever heard of it, I don't think Tim had ever heard of it either, when we were sitting there. You know, they started talking about that Raphael decision and how. You know, there's some some counties have profited huge off of some of these, I mean, people that had. You know, they only owed ten thousand dollars on a billion-dollar property, but taxes weren't paid, then the town, we sold them and. You know, they kept all the money and, I mean, it was a.
That was statute at the time, that is, that is what they were supposed to do with it.
Exactly, I mean, thi- this is just, and then this lawsuit got filed.
I said it's like stealing.
Yeah, and then it's, that was the statute, that's the way you did it.
Yes.
Then this decision was made, this Raphael decision. And then it opened up this ten-year window for the delinquent tax twenty-four.
The Raffielli decision was. The result of a court case, obviously, um and that. Because of that, M C L um two eleven seventy-eight T came into play. And that was effective December of twenty twenty, so really, we're only talking six more years than we've been dealing with, because that took place in twenty twenty. So I'm sure you're all aware, and with what Steve said earlier about the Raffielli decision and the MAC news alert. Uh regarding the recent Schaefer versus Kent County, that's where we're coming into this retroactive stuff, okay? Um that ruling uh has significant implications for county financial exposures. Safeguards were put into place through M C L two eleven seventy-eight T, which became effective December of twenty twenty, December twentieth of twenty twenty. This changed the way that us as treasurers handled foreclosures to avoid future lawsuits. So that that wouldn't happen anymore, because we were getting class action suits, um lawsuits, we had, you know, a couple here. We now inform possible claimants of their rights and the process in which they can apply for remaining proceeds of foreclosed property. There are many different documents and they, there's a form, they have deadlines that they have to file this stuff by, but. They're, they now have an avenue to which they can file for these proceeds. So that's, that saves us from lawsuits, because we're, like I said, we're giving them an avenue to get this move back um. There's um. The new court ruling, Schaefer versus Kent County, um states that anyone who had a tax foreclosed property auctioned between two thousand and fourteen. Through up to and and including twenty twenty may be eligible. To uh apply for remaining proceeds by March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Um there's a lot of moving parts to that right now, but I'll be at conference next week and we, there's already a closed session scheduled. For us to to talk about that, the attorneys will be there, um there also is a possible collaboration. With the legislature and other interested parties to seek financial assistum- assistance through the state, maybe to help us with the funding of that. But um one of our M A C T attorneys asked us all to compile data on what that would look like for liability. So we've all done that and gotten that to him, so um I'm sure there'll be a huge conversation about that. In our, you know, in the last day of our conference, that's usually when we have those kind of sessions.
That's probably something that we would go on a closed session if we were to to stay here.
Like I said, there's a lot of, right now, it's it's new, it's very new, so um there's gonna be.
Heard of it, so when she brought it up, I was like.
We've been dealing with it since twenty twenty.
I didn't realize you didn't hear of that before.
So, oh, that's been around for a while.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm pretty new to this board, so I I hadn't heard that, so I'm sitting there like, uh, what?
Yeah, Raffielli is a pretty common name in the.
I know that you uh. You know, you don't have a ton of these sales, but we we have them on on occasion, and so hell, all this stuff happened before you were even. Kind of treasurer, so that's what we're dealing with, this stuff.
You know, kind of, just as I was coming in.
Absolutely, just for coming in, so.
But uh, yeah, we've had, we had one that filed last year. Which we've just recently paid, because it has to go through the system and the processes, and we've got one. We just had our sale, our first sale, August second, and we've got one that applied for that, for proceeds from a foreclosure. To that sale.
Okay.
So this is going back to two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and twenty, do you, how many people are we talking that we would have to return money to them?
I think we would probably do that in closed session.
Cause they were asking for more of an amount than a than a number, you know, that's that's what we've compiled so far. We'll do it again, like I said, talk about that in closed session, like Chris said, so.
I'm sorry, I mean that.
No, that's okay, but.
Thank you for updating us on it, I mean, cause you know, it was like, I said at this meeting, I'm like, what in the hell are they talking about now?
Well, they came out with that, the the news alert after the Schaefer versus Kent County decision, so.
Okay.
Um I, I thought, and then Chris contacted me and said, okay, I'm getting these questions, so we, you might wanna, you know.
That suit, that suit we just had, it's been a while ago now.
We, I can catch you up in closed session on those guys too, so.
I've been keeping track of that.
Yeah, so does that answer the questions?
So because this board did make an official decision to transfer that one hundred percent, we would have to have an official decision or sending it.
Do you know what the the exact figures are that we're not going to accept? Since we took half of it.
I'm just gonna write it down for you.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion that we do not accept this much from and leave it as a delinquent tax. I saw move that. The board commissioners. Elect to leave three hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars in the delinquent tax fund. And not transfer it to the general fund.
I'll second it.
We had made an amendment when we paid off that lawsuit, so it was a little bit less. Do you remember when we paid that lawsuit, we deducted that out of that, but.
It's a different figure now?
What was that figure, John?
Three ninety-nine, four ninety-eight, but it's.
She's saying she's different, it's a different figure now.
Because we had decided.
I had meant my thing to say, buy us what we took out to pay the.
I don't think that's gonna.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna.
The remaining balance.
Do you have that number, Chris, legit?
I'm gonna look it up in the system. No, so you, the first transfer was three ninety-nine, four ninety-eight.
Yep.
Okay.
And the second was going to be less what number?
The one seventeen number that we paid for that lawsuit.
Came out of the delinquent tax fund?
Just write the number down and give it to him. Chris is looking how much it was.
One eighteen, two seven, two.
Two seven, two, one eighteen, two seven, two.
Total of two eighty-one, two twenty-six, two eight-one, two two-six.
Two eight-one, six.
Two eight-one, two two-six.
Um add five hundred in there.
Plus five hundred. Eighty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars that we will.
Okay, say it again, two hundred and eighty.
Eighty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars that we will leave with the delinquent tax fund.
And didn't she support it? Ken supported that.
Legit support.
Yeah, I supported it, yeah, okay.
By Steve, supported by Jan.
He's just repeat the, he's just repeat the motion before we vote.
Okay, sorry.
If we don't take two hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars from the delinquent tax fund. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Who's nay? Motion carried. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're rewarded for doing a good job. You got rewarded for doing a good job.
I appreciate that, I appreciate your support.
Well, she would have forgot that folder, we would.
It wasn't my agenda, right?
Terry, I have a question for you real quick, so you had one of the auctions already this week, sir?
Was our first.
Okay, so what do you do, one each day, or how do you do?
No, no, we have one and if. Then we have another.
I see.
We re-operate them.
I got a redemption on it.
Okay, can courthouse consideration to enter into the finance meeting?
Let's do this public hearing.
We got, we got to uh. Set a meeting. Set a budget meeting. And that would probably be the second meeting of September.
September seventeenth.
Right.
Thirty P M.
Right. I make a motion that we set the budget meeting for September seventeenth, at what time?
Four thirty P M.
Thirty?
That will be a a. Time of our regular.
Yeah, yes, yeah, you just have to set it. And you'll have to have it at four thirty when we come.
Second now. Or does somebody already set?
So people can can come and. And see, see the.
If they wanna talk about the budget, or they wanna talk, because it'll be budget, it'll be, it'll be on the website for review. And on that date, if they have a question, they can, they're they're more than happy to come in here.
I I will, we make it September seventeenth.
George already did it.
I've supported.
Okay. Motion by George, supported by Tim, to set the public hearing for the budget. For the pose, proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. For September seventeenth at four thirty, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Motion carried. Have any unfinished business? Unfinished business.
Unfinished business.
Hearing none, I would uh make a motion that we would re. Cease the regular board meeting and go into our finance meeting.
Support.
Motion by George, supported by Tim, to leave the regular meeting and go into the finance meeting, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's name? Motion carried.
I'm gonna take a.
Yeah, take a break. Take a five-minute break.
Small meeting tonight.
Been here a long time.
You need to turn that on silent.
Oh goodness. Are we still recording or are we on break? Well, I don't know, do we normally mute them during our breaks?
No, we just, it doesn't take that. We don't wanna hear your dirty jokes, so.
Yeah, I do.
Treasurer and administrator walk into a bar.
Why was the news trade is not wearing a big colored shirt with the else?
Oh, Lord.
And my father-in-law enjoyed that one, I'm sure he's listening right now.
Does he live right around here?
Manister.
What's that? Big village.
Looks out that direction now.
No.
Kind of sad to hear that the Hamilton Township Hall was being torn down.
Did you go to school there?
No, I grew up right at basketball.
Yeah, I knew you grew up out there. It was a school at one time.
It was. We used to play ball behind that thing and there used to be like a playground set, swings and teeter totters and stuff. We used to play on, when I was a little kid and, you know.
Remember, right, my dad worked with somebody that lived in Sickles from, at Oles. So the Lanson, yeah, somewhere right in that general area, cause I remember I went there as a kid.
Yeah.
And could pass that little school thing.
Did you?
Somewhere out there, somebody worked, just off of Ranson Road. I don't remember who it was or anything, but seems like we went out there.
Didn't know Rex Smith by any chance?
I know Rex Smith, yes.
Rex Smith, he used to be our equalization director. That Rex Smith?
Oh, this is a different one.
Oh, he used to work at Road Commission, lived around the corner there in Sickles. Is that where you're thinking?
Uh, no, he lived a mile or so east of there and it was a, a two-track back to his house.
Ah, yeah, the ones back on state land, back in there, yeah. This was a great neighborhood to grow.
Yep.
It's like Mayberry. There's really, they had a store on the corner. You know, it's a nice little area.
Remember that? That store's been gone a long time now, yep.
They kept, they kept being rotten after they opened it back up again.
Yep. Like change was, well, it was a little out in the middle of nowhere.
You know.
There was one, uh, they touted, they did a tally the same way, fifty two or it was wonderful, those.
People that ran it were just amazing people. They loved it. We set the officers, you know, hey. Okay, okay, let's go.
Go to this finance report.
Yep.
Uh, we've had no drain prepayments since, uh, our last update. Um, we've spent a total of six point nine million, seven point nine million dollars in our ARPA funds. Our expense, uh, expenses in July that went out is, uh, closing out our Ashley project. The last payment for the Ashley project was made. Um, I told you that we started reporting, um, administration, Woodhill contract expenses to you on a monthly basis. Um, so we've gotten billed for July and August. A total of low over seventy nine hundred dollars. Currently, they have been working on the BSNA uh, chart of accounts update project, which we are about two years behind on.
Yep.
And, um, it is currently being reviewed by BSNA, so they'll give us feedback.
Now.
We will
Woodhill, well, Woodhill finished the project, it's being reviewed now.
Woodhill gave them their draft. Now we're getting BSNA's feedback.
Okay.
Then it will be implemented.
Okay, gotcha.
So the, the hard part's done. Our OPEB balance, um, our OPEB is up six percent on calendar year. S and P uh, is up sixteen points three percent on the year. Um, our balance is sitting at just over two point four, or just under two point four, five million dollars. Uh, we've got two point one million seed money in that. So that is my finance report. Any questions? Not, I'll go ahead and report the cash balances to you. Our general fund had a five million dollar balance in it, um, you know, going back three years at this point in time during the year, we had a three million, uh, dollar fund balance. So year or month over month, we're, we're, we're still gaining. Um, one point two million, uh, in our ARPA fund, uh, six point, low over six point, just under six point two in the, in the delinquent tax fund at this point in time. Um, all the balances, all the trends look healthy and normal. I didn't see anything that popped out at me. So any questions, feel free to let me know. Um, now then I'll take questions on the check register too. I'm sure Sassy, did you get a response for that?
Yeah, I, one of those, I, I still, they must have changed the name, the, for the correctional. It seems like, I know that it changed doctors, but it seems like that office did call itself that. Maybe I
So was that Dr. Moos?
Yeah, I did that, yeah, it was Dr. Booth's bill and I was just like, I do not remember, cause it almost sounded like we were paying it to the Michigan Department of Corrections, kind of like, what? But it was that, that was the, the one that I was like.
So he did, yeah, he did purchase Dr.
Messengers.
Messengers. Uh, I forget what type of business it was, but then I think he filed the paperwork to change the name.
Okay, so it did change it. I just did not recognize that one. Usually I could look back at past things and fight them, but I didn't fight it.
It was a good month for Bruce Moss.
Well, the, uh, a, a lot of the, uh, lawyers that do work for the engine defense do hang on to their, uh, paperwork.
Length of all, they add up to
Some every quarter, some only handed in every quarter, like all the cases that they've worked.
These days I didn't turn in eight months of travel.
Indigent, indigent defense is booming though in, in Gresham County.
My wife reminds me.
Yeah, I know. My brother, I think that's all he does.
Most, most of the attorneys, that's what they do is, uh, in a defense funds.
Mileage reimbursements expire after two weeks.
We got an extra, hope you got an extra bed at your house. Somebody need it.
Any other questions on the, uh, check register? And, and the revenue expenditure report? Give you a minute, but we're kind of way behind, so.
Thank you.
I don't know what to do. If there's something that comes up, please hit all the currents.
It's goodbye. Not for dental, or
They go to back here.
Back here, okay. Cause I don't know if I have, one of that, is that the end of the, the school year or the end of the year?
The school year. End of September.
This, okay, cause I have something actually to try, I can still turn it in, can I? I don't know if I would have on there.
Hey, let's get the treasurer up here.
Back.
Got pretty quite a bit tonight.
I have. Like I said, our, um, my August second sale is done, but I don't have final numbers yet. So I can, I can let you know what those are at the next finance meeting, so, um, but the usual reports I have submitted to you, the transfers for July, bank transfers, the
I want to talk about the investments first, that you give us the sheet.
Absolutely, yep. Uh, investment sheet that I, that I handed out, um, shows that the pattern, the recent pattern seems to be holding.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that, that amount of money every month, I tell you what. Not going to be there forever, but thank God it's coming now.
Yep.
Might as well make hay while the sun shines.
Absolutely, I was just gonna say that.
Yeah, so, and I am keeping a, uh, running tally on since May. I know I reported that, but I am keeping that going. So if at any point anybody wants to know.
Watch.
Just contact me.
Basically, you take that number right there and multiply it by how many months we're in and then
Yep, but if you, and if anybody wants to know on the fly or quickly, you have, so. Uh, the receipt distribution, that, that pretty much stays the same, but that's just a, a tally of money that comes into us and what department it goes to, how much it is. That just lets you know those types of things on a monthly basis.
Cause I'm kind of surprised with the ARPA money that we've been taking out. Uh, the, the interest is, it's been old and steady.
It's not in those.
Oh, not in that?
No, it is in, um, it's in our operating fund.
Okay.
And that's not considered an investment. That's not on that sheet, but I do have those amounts here if, if you ever want to see them.
Okay. Okay, that, you're correct. I, I misspoke, okay.
That's okay. Um, and then the bank transfers as usual, so I, I will entertain any questions anyone has on any of those three reports. Any questions anybody has on anything else?
Put good work out of that stuff. This is, this is awesome.
Thank you.
He said
I was just thinking about this delinquent tax
Mm-hmm.
And someone can't pay, you know, I, I usually don't side with the government, but someone can't pay ten thousand dollars, but he's got a outfit that's worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Hmm.
He could borrow the money to pay
Absolutely.
You, I mean, he, he should be reminded of it.
They are, they are.
Well, I don't, I don't feel so bad about taking their a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We have, um, Tim, we send out so many notices, uh, both certified and first class. We, um, have a, a show clause hearing every January to where individuals that are in, you know, in danger of losing their home can come and tell us their situation and we, we can put them on a payment plan to where, so that takes them out of the foreclosure arena. And, you know, there are, there are a lot of options, but some people just choose not to take advantage of that.
You'd be surprised the number of people that just choose to let their taxes lapse. And then they try to read
Their mail, something, maybe.
How many years, how many years, you go back?
Three.
Three years. So they'll let them go all three years and then pay that three, three years ago. It doesn't make any common sense to, to me anyway, why you would do that. But there's businesses and people that do that all the time. It's, it's just gonna catch up. I mean, you've got to pay it sometime.
Yep.
Uh, and you're right, Tim. I, I don't feel too sorry for these guys that got a hundred and ten thousand dollar home and they let it go for ten thousand dollars.
I don't, that's, that's not what we want to do. We go to every length for that not to happen.
They've been
There's grant programs that we help people with. There, I mean, there's a lot of stuff out there, but, um, some of them, I don't know, but it's three years. So they know, they know what's going on and they just, I, it's kind of putting your head in the sand sometimes, I think, because if they just communicate. I'm, so we could come to some type of a solution. Cause there's a lot of different, a lot of different, uh, things out there that they could, I'm sure most of them could take advantage of. So we don't want to do it. We don't, we don't want these places. We don't, you know, we don't want to kick them out of their houses at all. It's not what we want to do. But sometimes if you can't get them to come to the meetings, answer the phone or answer, you know, open their mail. There's not much you can do.
Oh my goodness, it's all running wrong. I'll live. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we will go back into the full board meeting with the purpose of accepting the expenses and paying the bills.
Second it.
Motion by George, seconded by Tim to exit the finance meeting and go back into the regular meeting intention of paying the bills. All those in favor, say aye. Or nay? Bills are paid. Doesn't look like we have any additional public comment.
Matt, I, I do expect that closed session will be pretty quick and when we do come out, there will be some action.
Right. Chris is gonna need to be able to share his screen still.